Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening on October 16th. I now call this meeting to order. Invite all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges?
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Here.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in by phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Our first ceremonial item, we're happy to welcome Mr. Chris Eckert, title sponsor music in the park proclamation. Chris, will you please join us at the top?
Thank you.
Welcome. So it was great to see you at the park, and I will read the proclamation if you'd like to say some words after receiving it, and we'll take a picture.
All right, thank you very much.
Whereas the city of San Mateo is proud to recognize Chris Eckert as the second-time title sponsor for his outstanding contribution of time, effort, as well as financial support for the Central Park Music Series. And whereas Chris Eckert's love for the city of San Mateo and the Central Park Music Series is visible, and has continuously been visible for 14 years. Whereas Chris Eckert grew up in San Mateo and is a humble San Mateo business owner, and whereas Chris Eckert is a community partner, as well as a valuable community asset, and whereas Chris Eckert is fondly referred to as Mr. San Mateo for his nice outfits, which accompany his 28 pairs of colorful dress shoes, as well as his welcoming and kind personality. Whereas Chris Eckert has happily emceed the Central Park Music Series events and considers them a signature community event that brings out the neighborhood and local vendors. Whereas the city of San Mateo is glad to have Chris Eckert stand as a constant symbol of community pride, as well as American pride, by collaborating with the city of San Mateo to promote commemorative coins for our fallen hero's memorial. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Amheron Slay, alongside the City Council, do hereby proclaim Chris Eckert as the outstanding title sponsor for the Central Park Music Series. Proclamations, Chris Eckert as title sponsor of Central Park Music Series dated 10/16/2023, signed, Mayor Amheron Slay.
Well, thank you very much. I am honored to be recognized for this, and I would like to thank my two very valuable assistants, Michelle O'Connell and Ashley McCoy, because without them, I couldn't do it. They're the ones, the women in my lives are the ones that make me look good, so I appreciate that, and I appreciate being recognized by the council. We absolutely love the music series, and even if we weren't recognized for it, we would still do it, because it's such a fun event for us. And I would have to say that I actually wasn't born in San Mateo. I feel like I was born here. It's my adopted home, and I would rather not live anywhere else, but I was actually born in the East Coast, and because I grew up there in the cold and so forth, I much prefer living in California, living in San Mateo, so I definitely appreciate that. So thank you. I'm honored and I appreciate it. I will continue for many years to be the title sponsor if you offer it to me. So thank you.
Very happy. And we don't have to make any amendments, because technically, it just says you grew up here.
Okay, okay.
You still get it. Tough suit to follow. But I think if anyone can do it, our very own Karen Ferguson from Cora, who is here to accept the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Karen, please join us at the top. Thank you. So I will read our proclamation, which is being accepted by Karen Ferguson, CEO of our very own Cora, the county's wonderful organization that serves, provides very comprehensive support to survivors of domestic violence. Whereas one in three women and one in four men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner, and whereas on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 phone calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide. Whereas the city of San Mateo stands to support the victims of domestic violence in our city, our county, and around the world. And whereas the city of San Mateo recognizes and thanks the first responders, service providers, and community members who work to make sure that every American can live safely with dignity and respect. Whereas every survivor should know that they are not alone and they deserve better. If you or someone you know needs help today, immediate and confidential support is available 24/7, and the citizens of San Mateo are encouraged to call National Domestic Violence Hotline at 1-800-799-7233, or visit thehotline.org. And whereas the city of San Mateo residents should further educate themselves on resources and services that may be available to better protect themselves and others against domestic violence. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Amheron Slay of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of its residents, do hereby recognize the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Proclamation of Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month dated 10/16, signed by Mayor Amheron Slay. Karen, great to see you. Would you like to share a couple words?
I would. Thank you very much, Mayor Lee, City Council members. I would like to start by saying that this is a time in our county when we need not just Domestic Violence Awareness Month, but we need domestic violence action, and we need action not just for the month, but upcoming. We know that just since January in San Mateo County, there have been five homicides, all of whom were domestic violence-related, and that is an incredibly troubling number. Beyond that, I can tell you that unfortunately, we can't report that intimate partner abuse rates are going down, and so we need to lean in further. And I will say that this council, this city, could not make me more proud. The partnership that has really grown up over this past, just even six months, even beyond all of the support that you have given Cora for many, many years, has really been tremendous, and I have really seen you all step forward and recognize that we have to be talking about this, we have to take this on as a community engagement in order to start to make a difference. And so I have seen you all participating. You brought us as a host in partnership with you for the Council of Cities, and Patrice Martin, you know, your amazing work in that, along with Mayor Lee, was incredible, and all of you being there, and bringing the partnership of all of the different city councils has allowed us to reach out and to engage the county again in a level there. I don't believe there have ever been this many Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamations in the county. We already have 10 cities, and the county tomorrow will be doing their proclamation. And that was really by your example, so I just am incredibly grateful for the partnership that you have all given us. Not only have you done partnership, which is important and brings awareness, but you have taken action. And so I was just chatting with Mayor Lee, and I've been working behind the scenes on finalizing contract stuff, but it is there, and City of San Mateo is stepping forward to do the Speak Up campaign to really engage all community members in how we understand intimate partner abuse, how we can recognize the red flags, and what we can say to each other to lead people to the resources that Cora provides and many others. I will highlight the Cora hotline number, which is also available, which is 1-800-300-1080. We like to say that whenever we get the chance, so just putting out there for anyone who needs it. I continue to look forward to partnering on the action that is so important for us to work together in order to address intimate partner abuse. Thank you very much for the proclamation and your partnership.
Thank you. And I would just invite everyone to give another round of applause to Dr. Ferguson. It's under her leadership. So it is thanks to her leadership and her partnership and the conversations that we had that the Speak Up program has been able to roll out countywide in just the, you know, the last couple of months. It's already, I think you've reached five, five cities? Is that right?
We have five. I might have eight by the end of the month at least, so.
That's fantastic. And so this is an issue that takes all of us together, and thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for your leadership.
Thank you all.
Okay, I'm getting my steps in. Our third ceremonial item is to acknowledge Fire Prevention Week, and I would like to invite up our very own Chief of Fire, Kent Thrasher, and Marshall Marshall. All right. This proclamation reads, whereas the city of San Mateo is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting San Mateo, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Homes, fires, home fires kill more than 1,460 people in the United States in 2023, according to the United States Fire Administration. And in the United States, there were 350,000 residential buildings' fires in 2021. Whereas kitchens are the place in homes that are most likely to have a fire, and whereas staying close to the food you're cooking to, you're cooking while minimizing distractions, and whereas residents should clear the area around cooking appliances to minimize the chances of fire spreading in the kitchen, and should turn all pot handles towards the center of the stove to prevent burn injuries. And whereas San Mateo residents are encouraged to learn how to use a fire extinguisher and keep a lid closed so that it may be slid over fire if it starts. And whereas San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas San Mateo residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us it's important to learn how to safely cook in our homes to prevent a fire. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Amheron Slay, alongside the City Council members, do hereby proclaim that San Mateo recognizes the importance of Fire Prevention Week in 2023. Dated 10/16/2023, signed, Mayor Amheron Slay. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We appreciate the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. A lot of people probably don't realize that Fire Prevention Week is also the anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire. It also happens to coincide with a fire that nobody's heard of called Peshtigo, Wisconsin, which was the largest wildfire in U.S. history, most damaging and the most deaths, with around 2,500. So, you know, we like to use Fire Prevention Week to remind us all that fire safety is everybody's responsibility. You know, Ben Franklin probably put it best, and he was in fact talking about fire prevention when he said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." That is a fire prevention saying, and we love to actually claim that. And so we like to remind people that it really does start with you. A small fire for you is a disaster for you, and it can be a disaster for the entire community. And so we like to remind people to practice good fire safety, whether it's through home hardening for wildland fires, whether it's for cooking fires, not leaving candles unattended or any of the other things that could start a fire in your home. If you have any questions about different fire prevention methods, feel free to give us a call, or you can go to our website, www.smcfire.org. And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Robert. I don't know how to follow that. It's always good to travel with the smartest guy in the room. Keeps me honest and keeps me looking good. Now, we thank you for the opportunity to be here and to present, just to remind everybody of the critical nature of fire safety. And as we are winding down our fire season, we'll remind everybody that we're not through the woods yet. We have at least a good, another month, solid month of weather that we need to be watching out for and potentials for the wildfires. Though the numbers are down this year, we're about 400,000, 500,000 acres statewide this year. The average over the last five years is about 1.6 million acres per year. So we are happy that we're there this year, and we want to keep it that way. We appreciate everything everybody's done in our environments that are in the areas that are exposed to the wildland, and all the vegetation management that's taken place, and we just want to keep that up. So we thank the council, the mayor and the city for the support that you offer us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And while we have so many people in the room, which is so nice, I wanted to give you the floor to share a little bit about, you know, who is in deployment, and just to remind folks that, you know, we might not be fighting fires here on home turf, but we're always fighting fires. So our, you know, our Consolidated Fire Department is often on the road with the, providing mutual aid. And so did you want to share a little bit about what's happening?
Oh, certainly. We're always proud of our troops that deploy, though again, it's been a slow year. We have had up to 16 of our folks deployed as far as Montana this year and Oregon, primarily though they ended up at the Smith River Complex in Northern California. And we've gotten all of them safely home after several weeks, up to eight weeks of deployments. We have two left deployed, one, actually, I think he came home today, and we have another one that should be coming home this weekend, and once he's done, we're hoping that's it for the year. But again, we got another, at least 30 days of, we're not sure what'll happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good to see you. Don't go too far.
Okay.
And just a little PSA, you know, our fires are burning hotter and much more toxic because we have so much toxicity in our homes. And so one of the things that we can do to keep our own firefighters safe is to, is to bring all of our biohazards and our, and our chemical hazards, like our cleaning solutions and our paint cans, to the county dump to be processed safely and ecologically for free. So that service remains available to everyone in the county, and I highly recommend you do it. You just can make a, you can schedule an appointment online. So actually, the number one leading cause of death for firefighters is cancer, and that is due to the, not just the smoke that they're inhaling, but the toxic exposure that they're experiencing. So very real people that we can protect also. With that, I will close out the ceremonial items, and we will move on to the Consent Calendar. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the Consent Calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number five, Park and Recreation Commission Eligibility List Appointments. Item number six, City Managers Office and Community Development Department Classification and Job Specification Updates. Item number seven, Benefits Broker Services Agreement. Item number eight, Main Library Interior Painting Phase One Contract. Item number nine, Beresford Tennis Court Reservicing Appropriation and Construction Contract. Item number 10, Clean Water Program Program Management Amendment. And finally, item number 11, Utility Truck Purchases Purchase Contracts.
Thank you. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the Consent Calendar? Great, seeing none. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any Consent Calendar item? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for Consent Calendar items only.
I have no speaker slips on Consent Calendar, and I have no hands raised.
Thank you. Is there a motion from council to approve the Consent Calendar?
So moved.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes, however, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. And one more note, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers may, must stay on topic. If speaking to a particular agenda item, and if speakers, if, if speaking during general public comment, they may address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Next, we will turn to item number 12, Community Flood and Storm Protection Fee, Public Hearing.
Public comment, we do have public comment.
Oh, right.
On the agenda.
After all that, yes, we.
Okay, we have four speakers.
Rewind. We welcome public comment.
Okay, first speaker is Elizabeth Stain, or Stone?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to speak briefly tonight. My name is Elizabeth Stone, and I've lived in San Mateo almost my whole life. I'm the daughter of a Holocaust survivor and the granddaughter of survivors of Russian pogroms, people who fled to the United States to freely practice their Judaism without the threat of death. In these very dark and chaotic times, the citizens of San Mateo look to our government leaders for guidance. I realize you may be reluctant to take a stand on an issue you feel is unrelated to your work as city leaders. San Mateo includes many Jews, Israelis and Israeli-Americans, residents who need you to stand up for the people of Israel and for the Jews within your city. Already in the last week, Bay Area Jewish institutions have closed due to threats, or have had increased security at our community centers, schools, and synagogues. Because unfortunately, what happens in the Middle East has a ripple effect all the way down to this city. The media is confusing, and sometimes facts are hard to find. All you need to know is that more than 1,000 Jews, along with Arab Israelis, were murdered in their homes, in their fields, and at a joyous religious celebration of music and dance. 200 Jews have been kidnapped by Hamas, including babies and grandparents. More San Mateo residents than you may imagine have ties to family and friends in Israel. I do. And know that stating support for your Jewish neighbors in Israel does not lessen your concern for the welfare of innocent Palestinians caught up in this nightmare. Please let your citizens know that murdering Jews is never acceptable. It seems like an easy concept to embrace. Unfortunately, history has told us otherwise. Please be bold, be unequivocal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Kilroy.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was at a farmer's market this last weekend, and a young farmer who was selling pumpkins came up to me from Half Moon Bay after he saw this sign that was about fixing Prop 19. He said, "This is the only thing I will sign here today." He was eager to take petitions to get his family and friends to sign because he has seen the carnage from Prop 19. I'm part of a group of volunteers who are trying to bring back the protections that were lost in 2020, one that was in place for 35 years. Prop 19 was marketed with a deceptive, costly campaign. I've heard figures ranging from $35 million spent all the way to $80 million, and it barely passed. The removal of this protection has a variety of downstream effects that impacts us all: families, adult children who are caregivers to aging parents in their family homes, those who are renters for mom and pops, the disabled, ironically, because Prop 19 purported to help the disabled, and it did in some ways, and any people without a Silicon Valley salary. These people include critical jobs, like yourselves, in city roles, teachers, tradespeople, pharmacists, EMTs, daycare and retail personnel. We need them all to function as a community. Most are still unaware of this change and only learn after someone dies. We need just under a million valid signatures by January to take it back to the 2024 ballot for vote. To me, deceit has no place in democracy, and Prop 19 was pure deceit. The deceptive campaign tactics should be illegal. To me, any measure should say, "This is what you get, and here's what you're giving up." Please visit forcalifornians.com to learn more or volunteer. I'll be in the back of the room after to answer any questions. On another note, I hope San Mateo residents are game to support the flood initiative, because I think we need to be better prepared. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Irina Mavridis, followed by Wayne Swiner.
Good evening. So I'm here actually to discuss one of the flood issues here in San Mateo, and that is the flooding of the proliferation of so-called small cell wireless facilities, aka cell towers. This will be my third time that I've been speaking here, second time in front of your council, and I am seeking your help. So we are not Luddites. Many of us, including myself, rely on technology to save lives, to live. We do not want these cell towers so closely. cell towers so close to our homes blazing 24/7, steps from where we live, sleep, and heal. I won't go into the host of health issues tonight related to EMF exposure and why we're fighting this. The Supreme Court ruling in 2021 already accepted 11,000-plus pages of peer-reviewed evidence demonstrating negative health effects to humans, to the environment, to animals. The cell towers that were being placed right now, I know many people here have gotten Crown Castle notifications that a tower is coming up in front of their house, is actually being placed contrary to the city's own design standards. There's a quote from the city website, "The city recommends and prefers installation in areas not zoned residential, as well as near schools or parks. It should be considered as a last option." But the overwhelming majority of these cell towers are basically being placed steps from bedrooms, from nurseries. I do want to also note that each one of the small cell antennas transmits pulsed radio RF microwave radiation at 28,000 megahertz, and such antennas can only deliver wireless information service for broadband internet, but not wireless telecommunications for phone calls. So this will do nothing for cell coverage. And per the Supreme Court Environmental Health Trust versus FCC ruling, there is no valid microwave radiation guideline exposure for 28,000 megahertz. It goes only to 6,000, rendering these approved permits invalid until the FCC completes its court-mandated work in the U.S. Court of Appeals. I do want also mention, you know, we have our fire champions here today. There's, according to Tony P. Simmons, an electrical engineer who's a subject matter on this, so many fires were started due to cell tower and 5G small cell sites. Every electrical device is going to fail at some point. There's been so many fires in California, I could name, you know, so many, Silverado, Woolsey, so many are linked. Malibu, of course, in 2007 is linked as well to a failed facility. We want to protect our health, our environment, our homes. Please do the right thing. Please add this to the agenda so we can discuss this further. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And last speaker is Wayne Swiner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm right with her. Didn't make a speech before I came here, but I wrote it all while I was sitting here. We have to stop the cell towers, the installations. It's not good for the neighborhood, schools, and general everybody. Why can't these big corporations put the cell towers out on the high voltage lines out in the bay? Let them do their jobs out there so nobody else is affected by them. Yeah, I got a cell tower that's going to be 50 feet from my bedroom, for Pete's sakes. I mean, you know, I've already got stage three cancer, and I'm not really concerned about myself, but I'm concerned about the kids and everybody else that's in the neighborhood, especially the schools. Yeah, with all the cell towers being installed, there's going to be problems down the road. You won't see them right now, but down the road, you're going to see a lot of people go into the hospital for, like she says, all these radiation emitting, radiation, what they're doing. So, yeah, if Verizon has their way, they'll put all the other cell phone companies are going to follow suit, and they're going to want to put their cell towers on the same telephone pole so they get, you know, use the area to go ahead and pollute our area even more. It's not right. It's not fair for us. Yeah, ask yourself, would you want these things around your neighborhood, in your backyard? I know damn well you guys don't want them. So, you know, why should we be the ones that suffer the consequences? Because this is going to turn into an experiment, is what it is. And once they find the people coming sick, stuff like that, oops, we made a mistake. Oh, well, we'll try and make it better and pay someone off, and we'll put them someplace else, or take them down, whatever. But it's going to be too late by then. Yeah, that's about all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I have no other hands raised. I did want to check and see if Regina Trapp or Peter Wicker is in the audience. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, we will close public comment for non-agendized items. And now, we will turn to item number 12 for a public hearing, Community Flood and Storm Protection Fee Public Hearing and Potential Mail Ballot. Let's see. May we have the staff presentation, please?
After this.
Okay.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Lee and City Council members. My name is Jimmy Voe. I am a C Engineer in the Public Works Department. To my right is Chris Coulter. He is a consultant with SCI Consulting. They have been paramount in working with us on the fee report, as well as helping guide public work staff through the Prop 218 procedures. Much of this presentation is going to be very brief. A lot of this has been presented prior to city councils and other meetings. A lot of the time used today will be a form for public comment for residents and community members to provide input. We ask council to observe the protests and to determine if a majority protest exists. If a majority protest does not exist, council has the authorization to move forward with the mailing of ballot materials to affected property owners for the proposed stormwater fee. At a very high overview, the stormwater fee is necessary and is something that staff is looking for, mainly to combat the necessary improvements for stormwater infrastructure. A lot of our system is quite old. A lot of the system is 50 years plus old with drainage and piping that has deteriorated, has led to capacity limitations, and has led to localized flooding throughout the community. That's the bulk of the fee amount. A smaller amount of the fee that's associated with this is related to funding for regulatory compliance, items related to requirements set down by the state and the MRP 3.0, as well as other areas where the city has limited resources. And the last note to make a point here is the city doesn't have a dedicated funding system for stormwater management. A lot of that is currently being funded through the general fund. Much of the work that Public Works has been working with SCI has been ongoing for about four years. Early in 2019, Public Works began working with SCI on developing and looking into the financial analysis of the city's stormwater activities. This includes the unfunded capital improvements that I mentioned earlier, includes the regulatory compliance items, operations, maintenance, but also includes dredging of the Marina Lagoon. These items were drafted and presented to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission in February of 2021, and several months later, a final versions were provided to council in May of 2021. It was at this meeting that council directed staff to potentially move forward with implementing a stormwater fee, and staff took time to work on that for the next few years. Earlier this year, in July of 2023, staff published the final stormwater fee report, and then in July of 17, 2023, the Prop 218 process started to initiate with the notice of the public hearing being mailed to all property owners. Part of the fee study included a public outreach component, and that was to gauge the willingness of community members to invest in the stormwater infrastructure. Surveys were mailed out in 2021, and then again in 2023. There are 5,000 surveys mailed in both times, spread across all the districts in San Mateo, and that was to gauge support for several different amount of fees that was presented in the Stormwater Infrastructure Program. Those fees were as low as $8 and as high as $18.87. And of the surveys that came back, only one with the lowest fee at $8 actually gained support of over 50%. This is important, if council is to remember anything about this presentation, is that $8 a month for the average single-family home was the fee used for the stormwater report. And with $8 a month, that would generally generate $4 million of annual revenue for stormwater infrastructure. I mentioned earlier that it's on average $8. If you look to the table on the right, that rate changes between $2.01 to as much as $11, depending on the size of your home. Currently, the existing funding that the city has for stormwater infrastructure is from the general fund. It's 3.2 million, and it's for baseline operations and maintenance. An additional 5.8 million is needed to fully fund the stormwater program. That means even with the ballot measure passed, there's still a gap of about $1.8 million. Staff is aware of this. Staff understands that even with enough funding, we can prioritize the most critical projects and move forward with those, and then use the existing funding as leverage for matching funds and grants and other sources through state and federal resources. One important note, and to really remember, as the fee is subject to a CPI increase, council has the authority to increase it every year by a maximum of 3%. And council or the city also has an option to bank excess interest for years that were higher to be allocated to years that are lower. For example, if a year had 4% interest, that fee could possibly go up 3% that year, and the remaining 1% could be allocated to a year that had less than 3%. A lot of this information was provided to the community in several venues and different approaches. We had two community outreach meetings that occurred in the June and July as components of the New Year Eve stormwater response, and then staff was present at all five general town hall updates in August and September. In addition, we sent a variety of print material through the general plan mailer, as well as a recology bill insert, in addition to two separate dedicated stormwater fee informational in June, as well as early this month. And finally, the last item that I want to bring to your attention is, we did use much digital means to spread the word even further, and that meant going through the city's San Mateo social media avenues, and also using advertisements on Google, Nextdoor, and Meta. In the event that council finds that no process of majority protest exists and asks for the mailing of ballots, staff has a tentative guideline or date or schedule for next steps. We are here today for this meeting on October 16th. If moving, if allow, ballots will be mailed out November 1st, with a deadline of December 17th for ballots to be returned. Staff will return back in January of 2024 to present all the ballot results, and that will indicate whether a passing of the ballot measure or an unsequested ballot measure would be at that meeting. The final item is if the ballot does pass this and does get approved, it will likely, it will be on the fall 2024 fee on many property owners' property taxes. This really is a very brief overview of the stormwater fee. Like I said and mentioned before, a lot of this time today is for the public to provide comment, and I am here, as well as Chris, answering any questions that council may have.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you very much to you and to Acting Director Fabry and everyone else who's been involved in this, and to everybody out in the audience who is here tonight in those blue shirts. I just have an educational question for myself. In the documentation, it says that the material, the vote will be returned to the tabulator. I'm assuming that's the city clerk's office. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Any other questions?
I've had some people that are concerned that this is just an ongoing tax that can never be reduced or removed, and I've heard clarification, but just wanted to put on record that if, for some reason, we had city funding or grant funding from an outside source and did not need the full amount of what we've allotted, at some point, we can then reverse or reduce the amount that we're taxing per year or charging per year. Can you give me some clarification on that for public? Thank you.
The fees that are collected for the stormwater improvements can only be applied for stormwater improvements. The city can't collect more if there is sufficient funding to cover for that. In terms of if the fee can be reduced on a year-to-year basis or potentially repealed, that's something I will lean to, Chris, to kind of provide a response.
Thank you, Chris Coulter with SCI Consulting. The council does have the option every year, this fee will go before the council. In order to place the fee on the property taxes, the council has to approve a resolution. So that would be one method that the council can adjust the fee downwards. The council wouldn't be able to increase the fee above the maximum rate, although the council does have leeway to go to reduce the fee or to not collect the fee at all.
And just to clarify, if we were to get outside funding and not need the full amount, then we're not allowed to charge or spend beyond our need? And I'm, again, not saying in any way that I'm for this. I just want to make sure it's on record, because I've had a lot of people concerned about it.
Through the chair, Brad Underwood, Director of Public Works. Yeah, it wouldn't be on necessarily annual basis, at least initially, especially initially, because we have a lot of work to do that's outstanding. So I don't think you'd see any of that happen for several years, if at all, because the system will have ongoing needs as we go forward as well.
Councilmember Hedges.
From all the meetings, the number I've heard to do all of the work when you do with the dredging, the culverts, the creeks, the collectors, the pumps, it's in a neighborhood of 148 million. I think that's correct. Please correct me if it's not. So it's going to take some time at 4 million a year unless we get some large income from, so I don't want people to believe that we can just shut it off immediately, because we're way behind the curve on this. This has been kicked down the road for many, many years, and we've just got to catch up with it.
Thank you so much. Any other questions from council? Okay, if we have exhausted all the questions, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Comments are limited to two minutes per speaker and received by the city council for consideration, but only written protests will be tabulated towards a determination of whether a majority protest exists. Written protests to the city clerk were due at 4:30 p.m. today. Madam Clerk, do we have any hands raised for a public comment for this item?
We are now accepting public comment on item number 12 on the agenda. If you have not done so already, please deliver a yellow request to speak slip to the clerk. I have currently seven in person and one remote attendee requesting to speak.
Thank you.
So we'll set the time at three minutes per speaker?
I think we said two.
Two minutes, okay.
We're going to call the first three speakers. If you could please line up as your name is called. Our first speaker will be Rich Krantz, followed by Amy Jessel Beland and Maria Godfrey.
Good evening, council members and the citizens of San Mateo. I'm actually speaking to you guys. Trying to make the trying to make the highest and best use of our time tonight. I live in San Mateo. I got firsthand flooded, so I kind of know a little bit about this. I would like to start by not, again, like, not talking to just the city council, but more importantly, to the citizens of San Mateo who can reasonably critically think this out and do cost-benefit analysis on what this tax is all about, what this fee is all about. We send our fire trucks to other cities and states for mutual aid to help. I've heard some comments about, well, the people that live on the east side of 101, we'll give them a couple of bucks every year to deal with the little bit of flood damage you have. That's not good critical thinking. We don't have a society built on behaving that way. At least, that's my opinion. There was recently a San Mateo journal article written by somebody called "The Hole Truth." It actually had a lot of holes in it. We reached out to try and talk to this fellow, and he shut it, don't want to talk about it. And that's not really a reasonable argument. One of the things that's, with engineering, stuff's pretty cut and dried. With people skills, it's a little bit harder. And this book has helped me a lot. How to Negotiate Like a Child. And it's not to be a slam against anybody, but it's to help me understand logical arguments. I just don't feel like, feeling is not a good reason for an argument. You really have to process this out. So I'm calling on all the residents who can negotiate like an adult, who can critically think, reason, who can do cost-benefit analysis. $0.26 a day is what we're asking for. It's less than $100 a year. I think that shouldn't be a tremendous burden on anybody. So that's all I got. You don't need another talking head to tell you what to vote. I'm asking you to think. I'm asking you guys to think out there critically and come up with a reasonable answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Amy Jessel, followed by Maria Godfrey and Nikki Hart.
Hi. Yeah, I just wanted to add to that a little bit. We hosted, I represent a homeowners association, and we have hundreds of homes. And we got some of the feedback, both negative and positive. And I asked about the negative because we have been kicking the can down the line. And the only thing they could come up with is, it's not our problem, it's the city's. They're the ones that did this. They should pay for it. It's like, but that's not a solution. We're looking for solutions right now and moving forward. So one of the things that I really want to emphasize is what came out of our meeting. We hosted a whole taco night and got all the input and feedback. And people are very concerned that we're creating this sort of, well, they mentioned the tax thing going up, up, up. That was one of the issues. The other one was an even more disturbing one, which was a "I've got mine" approach. And the "I got mine" thing is pretty pervasive right now. I'm hearing it everywhere, whether it's climate change, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's, well, I didn't flood, you know, things like that. And I think we need to, as leaders, make it very clear to the rest of our community that we are all in this together. And this "I got mine," you know, it's like, my kids are grown. Why should I pay for schools? I don't want to pay for a tax on property taxes. I don't want to pay for the schools. It's not socialism, which is what loves to get trumpeted out. It's about caring and about the community and about safety and about maintenance. And all of that needs to happen now. So we appreciate your support, and I hope we can get that across to our larger lens. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Maria Godfrey, followed by Nikki Hart and Jeff Lamont.
Hi, nice to see you all again, home number two. I'm Maria Godfrey, and as a longtime resident and educator of San Mateo, I've grown to love this city and the community it represents. That is why I strongly support the Community Flood and Storm Protection Initiative. I understand that some Samiteans, some who may be here tonight, question the need for $4 million expenditure for the future of our stormwater infrastructure. So I would like to invite anyone who is challenging the necessity of this initiative to come and see the changes for themselves at the south end of Marina Lagoon. The impact of last winter storms is evident, and the need for the Community Flood and Storm Protection Initiative is clear. This visit is actually foundational for anyone to have an opinion. Without it, you cannot possibly understand what's at stake. And I really look forward to showing all of you the why now of this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Nikki Hart, followed by Jeff Lamont and Alex Soriki Kudiki.
Hi, actually, it's Nikki Huth. And I've spoken to all of you before, so I too feel like I'm speaking to the citizens of San Mateo. As a retired RN and a widow, I was a victim of the flood with my whole bottom level of my house flooded and all of my property. I've had multitudes of problems since that occurred, besides the initial cost of $35,000 to $45,000. Fences fell, house settled, cracks appeared. I had more water come through following storms. And now I'm looking at $150,000 for repairs at this point in time. So I don't like to pay any taxes more than I have to, just like everybody else. But I really, really feel that this measure needs to be on the ballot and hopefully passed because, as it was already said, it's a community, and we should be here for each other. So I'm asking everybody to support that measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jeff Lamont, followed by Alex, and finally, Laura Wood.
Good evening, city council. So I'm also going to address this primarily to the citizens and the folks who'll be voting on this because my understanding is that the entire San Mateo City Council and the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors has endorsed this measure. So as a longtime property owner in the Parkside neighborhood of San Mateo, and more recently, in downtown San Mateo, I have seen firsthand the effects of the lack of attention to our stormwater infrastructure. As a longtime real estate broker, I also represented many of the buyers and sellers in the Parkside neighborhood. So as we all know, towards the end of last year, when we had heavy amounts of rainfall, there was flooding in many areas of San Mateo that resulted in significant property damages to homes. So, you know, we have not been paying attention to our flood infrastructure for many years. And I heard somebody put it pretty well. It's a lagoon with no room. So, you know, the Marina Lagoon is not just a place for people to water ski and look at the pretty water. It's a flood catch basin. And, you know, a number of years ago, we formed an improvement district, and we were able to get the city funding to work on the levees. And that enabled a number of neighborhoods to be pulled out of the FEMA flood zones and a number of other neighborhoods that would have been put into the FEMA flood zones. So, you know, if we don't start to pay more attention to this infrastructure, FEMA could very well say, all your neighborhoods, this one, this one, this one, you're all going back into the FEMA flood zone, which would mean that those folks would have to carry flood insurance. So I think, you know, the time for kicking this can down the road is over. We need to have a sustainable source of funds to pay attention to our infrastructure, and that will allow us to get further grants. The Marina Lagoon has not been dredged in 64 years. We need to take care of this. I urge the property owners in San Mateo to support this measure.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, on this item, we have Alex Quirco Kudiki.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's a pleasure to be here again on this important issue. I too want to speak to the residents of San Mateo about the importance of passing this initiative. And, you know, really, when I've spoken to people who oppose the measure, a lot of them, first of all, personally didn't experience flooding. And, you know, hey, not everyone flooded. That's true. But a lot of people did. But also, primarily, they attacked the measure on the financial side. And yes, it's more money, but nothing is for free, right? And if we're going to advance the city forward and invest in critical infrastructure, we all have to do our part. And I think it's a small price to pay to move our city forward. You know, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I live in the San Mateo Village, and I know from talking to residents there that there's a lot of hesitation and pushback in my neighborhood specifically. And I think what people don't understand in the village is that you could be on one street and have seen nothing, and the next street right over from you was totally devastated. And there were several spots like that in the village. And that a lot of this money would go towards fixing critical infrastructure in the village. Laurel Creek specifically is in quite bad disrepair in certain areas. And so, you know, it's not just a lagoon issue. It's not just a Marina issue. It's not just an east of San Mateo issue. It's also a west of San Mateo issue. It's a village issue. And so I would really strongly encourage residents in the village, even if you didn't personally experience flooding, open your eyes, look around, go walk by Laurel Creek, and you'll see that there's a lot of work to be done. The last thing I wanted to mention is accountability. And I've learned, you know, the first time I spoke here, I yelled at city council because I was looking for accountability. And now we've really partnered on fixing these problems. And I just want to say to every resident of San Mateo, the blue shirts will hold the city accountable. We're in this together, and that's why we're here, is to work together and be accountable together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll move to Zoom for our final speaker on this item. Chris Hines, please unmute your mic.
Can you hear me? Hello?
You might need to speak a little louder.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I apologize. I don't have a full script like some of the people were kind enough to lay out, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the mayor and city council. So as Public Works just spoke, they highlighted that they sent out 5,000 surveys. I'm curious to know how many actually came back. On top of that, during the recent meeting, August 21st, there was money allocated from that meeting to Public Works for stormwater. And so it'd be nice if, you know, the funding could be adjusted to, you know, funding that might have been recently appropriated to that. Also during that meeting, the director, Richard Lee, stated that the city of San Mateo has rainy day reserves in the amount of $68 million. So, I mean, how ironic that we have rainy day reserves. We have literally rain needs. Why not allocate some of that funds towards that as well? And on top of that, you know, we've had measures in the past, November of 2022, which is a Measure CC that passed to create additional funding to maintain basic city services. Another measure in 2020, Measure W, was introduced and passed to give more money towards maintaining city services. So with all that being said, I feel like there's got to be some funding in a higher amount allocated by the city towards the stormwater needs than just going to the public and asking for more money. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have received two additional requests to speak. And Jordan Grimes will be our last speaker on this item. Margaret Sullivan, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hello. I heard earlier that there are a list of different projects that need to be completed, and so this projected amount of money needs to be collected. And I was wondering where that list of projects exists? And what is the decision-making process in terms of prioritizing different projects? Who is responsible for that? And that's it. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Your questions are noted for the record.
And finally, our last speaker on this item will be Jordan Grimes. Go ahead, Jordan.
Good evening, council, honorable mayor. I just wanted to speak in favor of the stormwater fee. I'm a lifelong resident of 19th Avenue Park. My family has been in the neighborhood since the mid-1980s. In that entire time, we have never seen Leslie Creek as high as it was during the storms of this past winter. Climate change is here, and it is directly affecting the lives of Samiteans across the city. We have a collective responsibility to address these problems. What affects one of us affects us all, whether we realize it or not. For those in the hills, the lagoon and the creeks and the culverts carry and contain the water protecting you. For those in the flats, things are going to get worse before they get better. Storms are increasing in both frequency and severity. Even if you did not personally flood this year, it is highly likely you will at some point down the line. I want to urge us to act now, preventatively, before bigger problems emerge. We need to invest now in the present to secure our future. As the saying goes, the best time to start adequately funding our infrastructure was 20 years ago. The second best time is today. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment.
Thank you so much. Since we've determined there is no further public comment, I am now closing the public hearing. Madam Clerk, have you determined whether a majority protest exists?
We have tallied all the written protests to the proposed Community Flood and Storm Protection Fee, and there were approximately 28,994 notices mailed to property owners on the tax roll. And a majority would require one more than half that number, which is 14,498. The number of valid protests received is 54. Based on that, it is clear that a majority of owners have not protested the fee, and the council is free to take action on this item.
Thank you so much. I would like to call for a motion in a second.
I'd like to move that we go forward with this.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
If I can just clarify, going forward with this item means adopting the resolution for the staff recommendation.
Yes, I move we adopt the resolution.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Wonderful. I would like to ask council, we've already acted on this, but would anyone like to speak? This is a pretty momentous occasion. Councilmember Hedges.
Yes. The effects of what we're doing tonight, if it passes, are going to affect people throughout the years here in a very positive way. I worked for 11 years to get Sunny Bray, 19th Avenue Park, Vista Gardens out of the flood district, as well as the whole east side. The FEMA fees then were much cheaper than they are now. They've gone up about 600%. We had every one of our districts have flooding. Up in the hills flooded because of the small culverts and the level of water in Laurel Creek. Lagoon and Vista Drive, we had several houses there flood. One actually possibly moved the house on the foundation. So no area, when FEMA comes back in this city, is probably going to be without FEMA flood insurance. And it's going to take a real dent in all of our budgets. So that having been said, be pound-wise and don't be penny foolish. And take a good look at this measure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Lorraine.
I just want to mention that, as I mentioned once before, I'm very impressed with how far we've come in this process together. It's gratifying, and I just feel honored to be a part of this process. I am pleased that the council and with much support from the community is moving forward on this item. I'm cautiously optimistic[1738.57] I'm cautiously optimistic that we will have an opportunity in the near future to make a substantive step forward toward investing in our infrastructure with eyes open to, you know, an interest in benefiting our community for the future. And so I thank everybody for their participation and their work in this effort.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, through the mayor. I would just like to let everyone know, I represent District 1, which is west of El Camino in the northwest part of the city. And our district flooded severely during the rains, the storms last winter. A royal court in Baywood flooded, many areas of San Mateo Park flooded along San Mateo Creek. So this is something that really impacts all of us in the here and now, let alone what's going to happen going forward. I think there is tremendous opportunity. We all talk about wanting to get ahead and make sure San Mateo is a vibrant, wonderful place in 20, 30, 40 years. This is a down payment on that, that vibrancy. And we will be able to do things with this if the ballot is passed by the residents, to do green infrastructure, to be able to do really things that, as many of my fellow council members have said, have been put off for many, many years. So I want to thank, number one, the residents of San Mateo, who have organized to educate us all from the beginning. I want to thank staff for really listening to the residents and meeting them halfway or more, and trying to come up with something that makes sense. And I want to thank every resident in San Mateo for educating themselves and making the decision that's right for them in responding to this ballot. But really, think about the future of San Mateo. Thank you.
Through the mayor. I don't have much to add. I, I will say that my district, District 3, was severely impacted by the flooding this past winter. I have had a lot of pushback, particularly from people in the village who are on the FEMA flood map. And what I say to them is that while this may, these actions may not get them out of the FEMA flood zone, not taking these actions will guarantee that they'll never be out of the FEMA flood zone. And also, I'm thankful to Councilmember Hedges, because I at one point was in the FEMA flood map, and I really am thankful that I'm not paying FEMA flood insurance, and I don't want to be back in the map. So it's really important that, whether this impacts you currently by paying FEMA flood insurance or not, recognize that if you don't support this measure, you're basically guaranteeing that some point you're going to be back in the flood map. And that's not a scare tactic, it's a fact. Thank you.
Please, Councilmember Hedges.
I was very much involved in this, and one of the reasons that San Mateo Village is paying that is because of the narrow culvert that goes under the freeway and one low bridge that could possibly block water flow because of debris. If we can get that taken care of, I'm hopeful, I'm not positive, but I'm hopeful we can get them out of the FEMA flood district.
I'd like to chime in from the perspective of having served on council since 2019. And as one of the speakers mentioned, we have had several tax measures that have come to community. I wanted to clarify for the record that measure W was a transient-oriented tax, so that means that it only impacts those that are visiting from, in staying in hotels. And, and the measure CC that passed by, you know, an overwhelming majority of 70% only applies to real property transfer tax for properties sold at $10 million and above. The vast majority of San Mateans do not own properties that are valued at $10 million and above and are not selling their properties. And so, you know, I think it's, it's misleading to, to let those comments stand unchecked, because the fact is, is that a coalition across pretty much every single important stakeholder group in the, in the city of San Mateo has come together around this initiative. The blue shirts have united San Mateo, and that is why this measure is broadly endorsed by this entire council, by every sitting member of the Board of Supervisors, our Senator Josh Becker, our, our sitting Congress member, Kevin Mullen. It is a public safety issue, and it has support from our public safety units, including the police and fire associations. It is supported by our business community, including the Chamber of Commerce and our downtown business association. It's supported by faith leaders, neighborhood leaders, the Democratic Party, and the list goes on and on. And so I, I want to commend the work of the blue shirts, who are clearly representing the interests of our entire community, and, and they do so with, with the intention of keeping everyone safe and protected. And that's what this is about, safety and protection. And so I, for one, am very proud to be among them, and, and I, I know we have a lot more work to do, and, and that we will continue moving forward. So with that, I would ask that we take a quick break, and, and we will resume in, is five minutes okay? Okay.
I have to walk the line.
Okay, welcome back. Good to see everyone. Now we are turning our attention to old business, item number 13, Draft General Plan 2040: Circulation, Public Services and Facilities and Safety Elements. We have a presentation from Zach Dahl, our Acting Community Development Director. Welcome Zach. And Joanna Jansen. Sorry. Okay, both of you, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the City Council. Zach Dahl, interim Community Development Director, and I'm also joined here this evening by Joanna Jansen, Principal with Placeworks, our lead consultant for the general plan update effort. So as we get started here on this item before you, just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the staff team and consultant team supporting this general plan update effort. A lot of time has got in to get us where we are here, and it has been a team effort to get the general plan in the shape that it is right now. So for tonight's meeting, we'll start with a presentation, then move to any clarifying questions that you may have, receive public comment, and then look to have a discussion and then ultimately receive direction on the circulation element, public services and facilities element, and our safety element. And so to start with our project overview, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanna.
Thank you, Zach. As Zach said, my name is Joanna Jansen. I am a principal with Placeworks. We're the consultant helping the city with the general plan update process. I want to start with a brief overview of how we got where we are tonight, and we always start our discussions of the general plan with a reminder about the vision statement that was developed with the community very early on in the process and has guided all of our work on the general plan. That work has included establishing the vision, identifying 10 study areas that became kind of the building blocks of our general plan land use map, creating a range of land use alternatives within those study areas, and then studying and analyzing those alternatives and selecting a preferred land use and circulation scenario. We then prepared goals, draft, excuse me, goals, policies, and actions to support those scenarios or the scenario, and pulled all of those pieces together in a draft general plan that we published this summer, a few months ago. That brings us to tonight. This is the second of three city council meetings to consider the draft general plan since it's been out in the community since mid-July. We have also published and concluded a 45-day comment period on a draft EIR that analyzed the general plan. We have one more meeting in this city council series, two weeks from tonight, on Monday, the 30th, and then after that, we will be working on the final documents for council consideration for early 2024. During this time of public review, we have put a lot of effort into making the general plan accessible online to as many folks as possible, and we have reorganized the StriveSanMateo.org website in order to make things convenient and accessible for anyone who's interested. So if you go to StriveSanMateo.org, you can find the entire draft general plan, as well as a number of supporting materials such as a user guide, an online commenting tool is now closed, but the interactive draft general plan 2040 land use map is still active, as well as our Measure Y FAQ and a number of other resources. So I encourage anyone who wants to understand more about the draft general plan and opportunities for input to please visit StriveSanMateo.org. With that, I'm going to shift to a little bit more of an overview of the draft general plan 2040 itself, before Zach walks you through the three elements that we're going to be discussing tonight. As we talk about the draft general plan with the community, we really have been focusing on what we call the 10 big ideas, and these are some of the new and important changes from the existing general plan, as well as some of the foundational ideas that have are being carried forward from the existing general plan, and really focusing on the policy priorities that surfaced through community outreach and are now woven in different ways throughout the plan itself. And those include everything from supporting the local economy and focusing on equity for all residents, to improving community safety planning and awareness, like you've been talking about tonight, and initiating a comprehensive sea level rise strategy. The fundamental core of the general plan are these elements. We are, as I said, in the middle of three meetings where you're going to go through these elements one by one. The full list includes land use, circulation, housing, which is being prepared on a separate process, the community design and historic resources, conservation, open space, parks and recreation, public services and facilities, safety and noise. And of course, there's other important pieces of the general plan, like an introduction and a glossary, and the implementation plan that compiles all of the actions in the general plan and assigns responsibility and timeline to ensure that these actions become reality. The key themes of a general plan 2040 are expressed in every element of the general plan, and they are sustainability, environmental justice, and community engagement. These have been our key themes since the inception of the project and are reflected in many policies throughout the plan. One thing that we're very proud of with the draft general plan is improvements in the layout and graphic design of the plan to make it more user-friendly and more accessible to the community and the general public and anyone looking for information in the plan. So this slide just gives you a sense of what a page of the new general plan looks like, and I wanted to call out the icons that designate each one of the three general plan themes that you can see here on the slide. So every policy and action that is tied to one of these themes is designated with an icon so that you can easily find policies that relate to the topics of your concern. And with that, let me turn it back over to Zach to begin the discussion of the individual elements.
Great. Thank you, Joanna. So the first of our elements that we'll cover and provide an overview with this evening is our circulation element. Our circulation element covers a number of topics that look at all modes to get around the city. This includes multimodal transportation, transportation demand management, or TDM, pedestrians, bicycles and micromobility, transit and mobility, safety, traffic congestion, roadway improvements, future parking management, as well as looking forward to future mobility and technology. We also want to highlight the circulation map that is one of the basis for the circulation element during our alternatives phase when we are looking at our land use alternatives. We also looked at a circulation alternative that best aligned, and this one was really kind of an all-of-the-above approach that focused on linking our community and in particular our study areas where we would see the most growth and change. Another piece that we want to highlight, this has been a topic of conversation during our outreach effort for the draft general plan, is the roadway classification map that is included within the circulation element. We do want to highlight that this is not our locally generated classification map. This is Caltrans roadway classification map. It's included for reference, but is not being adopted as part of the general plan. These classifications are based on, were developed based on existing conditions in looking at factors such as average daily traffic, speed limits, access points, and travel lanes. And we do want to highlight that including this as reference is important as part of the overall funding that comes to the city based on different classifications of roadways. But we have heard the concern about certain roadways receiving arterial classification, and so, one, we did, we are recommending a number of revisions, one of which is highlighting that we do have both a principal and a minor arterial. And so we do want to highlight that the only principal arterial that's within the city is El Comino Real, or the other ones are minor arterials. So these are roadways that function at the lower end of this spectrum. Also, we want to highlight a new action that we are recommending gets included in the circulation element. This is, basically highlights our ability to evaluate these segments within our complete streets plan, and where we identify, based on the data that's present, a need to change a classification, how we would move forward with requesting that through both Caltrans and the Federal Highway Administration. Another theme that has really come up, and we wanted to reconfirm and highlight within our circulation element is safety. This is a topic that is already extensively covered within the safety element, and that includes a goal and 14 policies and actions. But what we want to do here is further highlight this and really identify it as kind of a cornerstone of a successful circulation element. All of our other functions really rely on a safe transportation network for all users. And so we're looking to increase the text that goes into the circulation element to kind of highlight this, as well as we've recommended a number of policy and action changes to further confirm this principle of safety really being a cornerstone of our circulation element. So we touched on a couple of our community input topics. In addition to safety and roadway classification, we've heard input on reducing roadway traffic congestion, looking at reducing speed limits, which is tied to safety, improving our pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and safety, looking at bike lanes and other uses such as parking within our right-of-way, and then also making sure that our infrastructure and our parking is sufficient as our city grows. We also held the general plan subcommittee meeting in August, and based on that, they had a number of comments and input on various aspects of the circulation element, and some of those recommendations have been incorporated into the recommendations before you this evening, and some of these other suggestions, if there's council direction, we can fold them in as well. And then also, we held a planning commission meeting in September. They had a number of recommendations as well, including prioritizing our capital improvement plan projects to align with the state climate action plan for infrastructure. We have looked at that and recognized that the state climate action plan for transportation infrastructure really is aligned more at the state level and wouldn't necessarily translate to our local level capital improvement projects. And so we really feel that through our climate action plan, as well as what's already in the general plan, would be sufficient to ensure that as we invest in our local capital projects, they can still align with state climate priorities while also balancing local interests and needs, such as where we invest and looking at other more local issues such as circulation, parking, mode shift, and other topics like that. Based on this input, there are a number of recommended changes that staff has brought forward and is in your packet this evening. The full list is right here. We can go into any of those in more detail if you have questions. But all of these recommendations are based on community input, general plan subcommittee, and planning commission input, as well as an ongoing staff evaluation and working with other stakeholders, including Sam Trans, as the general plan has evolved. Moving to our public services and facilities element, this is our element that really focuses on city functions. So this element covers our police and fire services, water supply, sewer and storm drainage, energy and telecommunications, our city public facilities, as well as children, youth in the schools, healthcare and social services, solid waste, and we've added a new section to reaffirm and highlight our seniors and aging. We did want to highlight this new section, seniors and aging, because we did have a number of policies and actions throughout the general plan that spoke to these topics, but we've heard from a variety of public community members the need to really highlight the importance of this. And so we wanted to dedicate a section along with a goal, and we've added seven new policies and actions that support this area and our senior population. We also wanted, this is based on community input, recommending a new action. This actually was not in your packet, but we wanted to highlight it here as it does best belong within our public services and facilities element. And this is really, this comment originated out of some of our community town hall meetings, and we heard it touched on at our planning commission meeting as well, which is kind of the concept of a heat map or dashboard where we can track city investments and capital projects around the city. And so while a lot of these are maybe more focused than you would typically see in a general plan, we did see an alignment here with our overarching objective of inclusive outreach and ensuring that there is a community awareness about where we are investing and doing our capital improvements. And so we are recommending a new action, PSF 513, as kind of setting a framework for how we could track progress. And so that's something we can touch on more, but we are recommending that council consider that as part of your direction on our public services and facilities element tonight. So then kind of moving into overall community input, in addition to what we talked about with seniors and aging and kind of a heat map, tracking of public projects, we've also received input, both support and concern for building electrification, a variety of comments on maintaining and improving our stormwater infrastructure, and ensuring access to fresh foods and grocery stores, especially as there is a transition at our local retail and commercial. Moving to our general plan subcommittee feedback, there was a number of comments and input on supporting use of recycled water, looking at ways to increase public restrooms at our public parks and facilities, strengthening policies about microgrids, and then also looking at how we can expand public Wi-Fi. On this element, the planning commission focused their comments on looking at ways to expand public restrooms and ensuring that we provide an equitable distribution of public services and facilities throughout the city. And then based on that input, we have a variety of recommended revisions and updates, with a lot of this being based around the new section focused on seniors and aging. Moving to our safety element, this is the element that really focuses on how we prepare and adapt and ensure that our city is safe and resilient. This includes emergency readiness and operations, looks at geologic and seismic hazards, flood hazards, sea level rise, wildfire, and then hazardous materials. Community input is really focused on ensuring there's sufficient flood protection infrastructure, making sure we're adapting for sea level rise, and making sure we're also resilient to all potential hazards based in climate change. With the general plan subcommittee, they focused on looking on the idea of highlighting the county event center as an area that's a designated emergency shelter, and were recommending specific reference within a couple of different policies and actions. The planning commission focused on two areas, one which was supporting a one shoreline sea level rise overlay zone mapping, and prioritizing the establishment of microgrids in our equity priority communities. Based on this input, as well as input we've received from Calfire, we are recommending a variety of changes and updates to our policies and actions that reaffirm these topics and ensure that we're consistent with state requirements specifically with regard to wildfire. So that covers the three elements. In terms of next steps, we held our first meeting before you two weeks ago on October 2nd. We're here before you for our second meeting, and then we'll have one more meeting coming up on October 30th, which will focus on the land use element. Once we complete that, we'll be transitioning to preparing a final general plan and our final environmental impact report, and then we'll be coming back to you beginning of 2024 with adoption hearings for our general plan 2040. So for tonight's meeting, we are focusing on these three elements, and we're really looking to council to answer the questions of, do you support the staff recommended revisions to each element, and are there any other changes or updates that should be made to these three elements in the draft general plan? And so with that, that does conclude staff's presentation. I did want to highlight, and similar to our last presentation, for each of the three attachments that include specific recommendations, we have all of those exhibits here, and we can pull those up if you have any specific questions. But otherwise, we're available for any other clarifying questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Zach, for a very in-depth presentation, and also for the packet, was, I thought, really well organized, and the side-by-side attachments I found very helpful. So this is the time for questions from council. Who would like to begin? Councilwoman Mullering.
Thank you. Through the mayor. Zach, I appreciate getting to discuss this with you a bit earlier, but I think it'd be useful to bring, elevate the question to the rest of council and the public. But among a lot of the recommendations and input from one shoreline, there was kind of an extra emphasis that seems to parallel some planning commission recommendation in support of establishing a sea level overlay zone. We have an action already in the safety element that notes it wishes to study the feasibility of establishing a sea level overlay zone that would allow for the creation of adaptation policies, rules, or construction codes unique to this area, et cetera. I understand that some other cities, including Burlingame and South San Francisco and East Palo Alto, have either established such zones or something similar. And so, given this, you know, could you maybe explain why our current action indicates studying the feasibility of establishing it, wherein other cities have established a feasibility? Could we change it to simply establish a sea level overlay zone, and if not, why not?
Thank you for that question. Each jurisdiction along the bay has a different type of shoreline, and so San Mateo's is unique in that the way our topography sits and our adjacent sea, to say Foster City, Seal Point, and Burlingame, has a slightly different shoreline than some other communities, and so we have a different type of exposure for a lot of our properties. And so one shoreline has recommended a suite of different options as ways to plan for and adapt moving forward, and this is one tool to be used. But given a number of our investments, which have focused on levy improvements and other stormwater and flood reduction measures, there are other tools that may be more appropriate for a lot of our privately-owned properties. And so while a sea level rise overlay zone may be appropriate for San Mateo, we're still looking at that. And so that's why we use the term explore rather than we committed to it at this point. Looking at other tools such as improving our levy system, other ways to address storm drainage, may be better outlets for how we can get properties out of the FEMA flood zone, and this was talked about just at the item right before this topic here. And so that's why we're using the term explore rather than committing to just yet. And one of the first steps will be preparation of a citywide adaptation plan that will focus on sea level rise and flooding, and that will be an opportunity to really drill into this topic and determine, is an overlay zone appropriate and useful to help San Mateo plan and adapt for the future?
Thank you. And we have a number of actions, I believe, in this element that lean toward us pursuing the citywide adaptation plan. Is it safe to say that, well, I guess, you know, there seems to be some concern over if we don't strengthen the language to ensure that we explore either a sea level overlay zone or, you know, another, you know, prescribed plan for ensuring that our properties on the bayfront, for example, are adequately preparing for sea level rise, that we might simply fail to do so, or delay our action in a way that would be potentially damaging to us? Would you say that with the current staff recommendations and the current draft general plan, council will, in the not-too-distant future, for example, be able to, you know, dig into this through the citywide adaptation plan?
Yes. I know there's already been funding allocated to get this process going, and this is definitely a city priority to move forward with this. And obviously, as we've seen, this is, these are pressing issues that we want to address as soon as possible. And so looking at the term explore, I wouldn't see that that's going to be in any way limiting our ability to move forward with the most appropriate measures, once we've had the chance to really evaluate them and determine what are the best paths for us as we look at adapting and preparing for sea level rise.
And whether we had such a change in language, either way, would it be accurate to say that we'll be pursuing this after, for example, we adopt a general plan, and after, like, you know, during the zoning changes that would occur after adopting this general plan, and perhaps sometime afterward? So I, like, I guess, you know, is it fair to say that the time for us to pursue this, whether it's studying the feasibility or establishing a zone, would be a couple years from now?
It's hard to be exact, and I think, to your point, whether it's establish or explore, I mean, it's going to push us toward the same outcome, which is, we really need to study it, look specifically at our shoreline, at our different properties, the level of risk, and then the best tools to help address that, build up our resilience. So if there's interest in council in making that commitment, I think we can still do that. But we would recommend the term explore just because we haven't really looked at it and determined, is this one of the best tools, or are there other avenues via policy or other tools that are better suited to help address and improve resilience? address and improve resilience along our properties that are more exposed to sea level rise?
Okay, thank you. I had one question about the circulation element I'd like to bring up, which is, there was some public comment from the online tool related to Action C 1.21 for performance and monitoring, and it's within our list of staff recommendations to look into monitoring the mode split that the city of San Mateo may see with, you know, within, I would say, like auto-based transportation and perhaps other modes on a regular basis. And I agree with that, I support that, and was just curious to get your explanation on, you know, what you think regular could mean. You know, at what point would council and staff be able to put a finer point on how often that could be?
Thank you for that question, and I can start, and I know we also have our principal transportation planner, Sue Ellen Atkinson, here as well, and she can dive into the nuances and specifics of this much better than I can. But based on our discussion earlier today, there's a couple of pieces here that we would need to kind of look into more specifically before we could, say, commit to like annual or biannual or a specific number. And so we use the term regular because as we move forward with some of our other more focused planning initiatives, we need to kind of look into what the term mode split means, how we could collect that data, and then what's an appropriate interval to study it. And there's different, there's staffing needs there, there's funding requirements, and methodology that we would need to flesh out. And so those are, those are technical pieces that we could look at more closely. I mean, if there's interest at upcoming council blue skies priority setting where you want us to focus on it sooner, we could also do, this is some of our TDM ordinance that's moving forward, but that's why we use the term regular rather than committing to a specific interval.
Thank you. No further questions.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Hedges.
Actually had some of the exact same questions as Adam did. And I'm wondering, Burlingame, South San Francisco, and East Palo Alto have already done some addressing of public access flood and sea level rise performance guidelines for the bayfront. Are we considering anything like that? I mean, it's already written.
We've been working closely with One Shoreline, and I think as we get into our adaptation plan, we would definitely be looking at the existing body of policy work as to how that would best apply here. But at this point, we're starting with kind of the framework in our general plan, and then we would then fold that into more specific policy that would go into our adaptation plan.
Okay. I really think the overlay is a good, is a very good idea, and that's, at least 25% of our city would be involved in that overlay. When you take North, our shore, our shore view and all the way to Belmont area, those are all in danger. And not only that, parts of Foster City, which face our shoreline, like Gilad, for example, a billion-dollar company, will be facing that. So I think making it clear what we have to deal with through an overlay is an excellent idea. It makes it clear for everybody. I wanted to go on to circulation, if that's okay? So you and I have already spoken about this, about the emails we received on the Fifth Street and Ninth Street as being an arterial, and I've shared with you that I think that's madness, actually, because they're streets to nowhere, basically, with, especially Fifth Street, with a lot of impediments to being arterial with stop signs and roundabouts. And you'd given me some information on that, that CAL, that CAL Trans has actually has it on a higher level with the state, that those are lesser arterials, and that there's actually ways that we can remove ourselves from those eventually. Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, definitely, and I'd highlighted that in one of our earlier slides where, yeah, we're just, we're including this map as reference, and it is, these are classified as minor arterials. And there is, and really, I think the key is, we have to look at this with a data-driven approach. What are, what are the volumes? What are the criteria? And do these segments meet that? And so we've included an action that's kind of specifically highlights that staff will be looking at that as part of our complete streets planning effort, and where we feel that the data doesn't align with the state classification, we would then outline the process for how we could make that request to the state to change those classifications.
I think you mentioned to me that one of the first steps would be to put a traffic counter involved to see the amount of traffic that are actually traveling on those.
Definitely. Traffic volumes definitely play a role in determining the level of street classification.
And what might be the second, third steps for that?
Actually, at that point, if I could ask maybe our, one of our PW, Public Works staff. Perfect. Maybe, maybe speak to how we move forward if we wanted to change the roadway classification.
Hey there, this is Bethany Lopez, senior engineer overseeing the traffic division. So a handful of things that we would look at certainly are the traffic volumes, but we may also look at roadway width as well and speed. So that's really the primary thing that we would look at for those recommendations. But I do think the volumes are really the primary mechanism that we'd be looking at to make the recommendations for a different classification.
Okay. Thank you. Just traveling down at one time, if Fourth Street is crowded, let you know that was a bad decision. Thanks. That's all I have for right now.
Additional questions from council?
Well, first off, thank you to my peers, because I've scratched out half of my questions. So trying to see what else I have left over. I've heard a lot about circulation as far as bike bridges and bike and pedestrian safety, particularly for east to west. I've heard a lot about that around the Hillsdale Boulevard corridor, so I know that's a fine point, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at east to west travel specifically for bicycles and pedestrians, and that's one of the hot points. Sorry, that wasn't really a question. As far as public services and safety, I wanted to make sure that we are putting something in our general plan that speaks to the fact that we need to constantly be having capital improvement and project funding for future projects. One observation in my short time on the council is often, for example, to use an example, we have an aging firehouse. Most of our firehouses are all, are all pretty new within the last 10 or 15 years, or at least have been upgraded, but we have a Station 27 that's, that's not in great shape. I want to make sure that as part of our general plan, we're speaking to the fact that we're not waiting for something to fail, but we're actually, as a city, continually putting away, you know, so that we have replacement in place for facilities, city facilities. Does that make sense? And do you feel like that's already included, I guess, would be my question?
Definitely, and the general plan really focuses on our different assets. So I think in our public services and facilities section, where we highlight maintenance of our firehouses per se, so we have policies that speak to different assets, whether it's our city hall, our parks, and recreational facilities. The specific funding choices, while we speak to maybe identifying funding sources, really that's kind of a mechanism that's more based around their budget or maybe our capital improvement plans, and we speak to it in the general plan, but it isn't necessarily where the specific funding is allocated or committed. But we have a variety of policies and actions that speak to the need to maintain and in some cases, expand or modernize various facilities. But we can look at that more closely, or if you've got specific direction, we can make sure that the general plan adequately addresses that.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I mean, it, just from a business owner perspective, in the past, like, when you have a piece of equipment, you amortize that, and you know when a piece of equipment has end of life. And the same holds true with facilities, you know? You know that this library that was rebuilt in this year is going to have a 30-year life before an investment's going to have to be made. So just the point being, making sure that we're always looking towards the future and not having to scramble every time. You know, the other thing that's glaringly obvious is that we didn't have stormwater infrastructure in place, and we haven't for 50 years. I want to make sure that we don't have things like that rearing their heads, especially in the next 20 years that this, you know, general plan is supposed to take place. Does that make sense? Only other question, sorry. The only other question that I don't think was asked, and I know we have a lot of verbiage in it, but just to reiterate, upgrades to grid, and again, maybe this isn't the appropriate, but want to be sure that while, while we are hearing from PNC Clean Energy that there's plenty of availability of clean, of clean energy, I want to make sure that we are addressing the fact that upgrades need to be made to our grid in order to be able to accommodate the electrification of our city. And I think that's in there, but just throwing that there.
Yes, definitely. We do have a section within our public services and facilities that, that focuses on that, including our grid. Obviously, one of the key pieces there is that we're not a utility provider ourselves, so oftentimes, that's more coordination and support, and then looking at avenues as how we can support those efforts or do efforts on our own and support that, whether it's with microgrids or other, other resiliency factors. But clearly, for a lot of our other plans, having a reliable grid that has the capacity we need is a key piece.
Yeah, thank you, Zach. And we talked about this similarly with school safety. You know, while we don't have direct control over school safety, you know, the safe streets around schools and providing safety officers for schools when needed or requested is all important. And so, you know, I appreciate that while it's not always necessarily within the control of the city, the fact that we're willing and going to be available for supporting is what's important. Thank you.
Thank you through the mayor. Going back to the arterials and circulation again, I thank you very much for putting the new policies or clarifications in about what you can do if you find that there's an issue or discrepancy. But how can we use this general plan process to try and do something short-term, given the fact that a lot of our development is already happening, it's not waiting for the general plan? And a number of our email, emails talked about the impact of Kukue Crossing and the new brick line and other buildings. So how can we use this process to really try and take a look at our street infrastructure before, you know, two, three years down the line, when you're going to get the information you need to say this is aligned or not aligned with the, with CAL Trans?
There, I think one of the important things to acknowledge is this is the existing map. This isn't a new map, and these aren't new classifications. Maybe there's, there's more new awareness of this roadway classification map because of the general plan update process, but this map is existing. So these classifications, they're on a map. That doesn't necessarily mean we're actively doing anything to change these roadways in response to that classification, and we are moving forward with our complete streets planning effort, other initiatives where we're looking at how we want to plan for our infrastructure, our circulation network for complete streets as we grow and as these other projects come online. So I think more than this roadway classification map, we should look at our local efforts that we're doing, the plans that are in place or that we're developing to align and support new development as it comes online as well. So I would maybe highlight that this is an existing map, and that's what it is, but it's not necessarily influencing locally what we're doing. We're listening to our community, we're listening to council direction as to how these plans are coming together.
Okay, so you would direct the community and all the people who wrote in to really focus their energy and attention on the complete streets plan and what's happening there to address their concerns about traffic calming?
Absolutely, because these are going to be locally focused efforts that are going to be listening to and responding to community concerns, to input from council, and, and rather than a statewide roadway circulation map, which is based on, on data, but it's, it's an existing map. It's not necessarily driving local decisions at this time.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we'll talk about that more later. I'd like to second Councilmember Newsom's comments about ensuring that we have sufficient emphasis on capital budgets. I noticed that in one of the policies, it talked about making sure we had budget for library materials. What the library really needs is capital budget, and we saw that with Marina Branch, and thankfully, that's going to be addressed, but the fact that it was falling into the water is an example of how we all need to get out ahead of it. And our main branch, which is the new branch, I think is 25 years old, so there's a lot of planning and a lot of need, and how do you, how do you use the general plan to begin to talk about evolving buildings? So, so I guess that would be my question slash comment. Another question, where in the general plan do we talk about small cell towers and impact? And how do we make sure? And we've done design standards, for sure. We went through this a couple of years ago in gruesome detail. But now that we have got such a high concentration of small cell tower applications, and we're hearing from a lot of the community, how do we use the general plan to make sure that, yes, we absolutely all need more broadband and cell coverage, but that we're doing it in a respective way so that, you know, things are not getting out of hand?
Well, I'll start, and maybe I'll ask our city attorney to weigh in on that one. We do have a telecommunications section in our public services and facilities element, and we do have a certain amount of local authority to set for aesthetics and placement of these facilities, but a lot of the specifics are set by state and federal law, and so we're limited in what we could put in terms of specifics within the general plan on this topic.
And to that, I think that's right. I mean, in preparing our local telecommunications ordinance that addresses small cell facilities, which was adopted by the council fairly recently, in the last couple of years, I mean, we do have to follow federal law, the Federal Telecommunications Act and FCC orders, and we, and pay attention to court decisions that limit our authority. We do have the ability to regulate aesthetics. We can regulate the time, place, and manner in which wireless facilities are placed in the right-of-way, but within limits. You know, we can't consider certain things under federal law, like radio frequency emissions, so the general plan is, can broadly speak to ensuring that we comply with federal law, but we have limited discretion in terms of the types of facilities that we allow and the manner in which those facilities are placed in the public right-of-way.
Sounds like it's more of a code enforcement issue in terms of what's actually happening, which we don't need to talk about tonight.
Sure.
Yeah. I guess another question, Director Dahl, in terms of, one of the issues we had last year with the floods or the storms was that Crystal Springs reservoir came close to spillover, and that was of concern to all of us, and there was follow-on action to try and figure out what the emergency response would be for it, but I didn't see anything in the emergency response part of this that specifically addressed the reservoir. Did I miss something?
That would, Emmy, would have been in our safety element.
Anyhow, if you could just go back and take a look, because that clearly is something that needs to be called out, because it was, we were very vulnerable last year. I don't want...
Definitely, and I don't know how specifically our general plan speaks to it. I know our local hazard mitigation plan definitely speaks to it in more detail, but we can look if there's any opportunity or need to more, be more explicit about that within our general plan.
I think it is in there. I remember seeing coordination with SFPUC.
Okay, it's there. Okay, great. Then I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions from council. You can see everyone's doing their homework. I, I also want to voice my support for the, the overlay zone, and I guess, you know, I, I think that, while I appreciate we don't want to commit to solutions until we've studied them, right? I think that's really important to do due diligence. I also hear from council that this is probably a strategy that, that has legs that could be coupled and augment some of the existing strategies that are already in place. And so I think maybe we're, we're sort of splitting hairs on this language, and I guess, I, I wonder if there's a way to make a small tweak to the language that would be, you know, something along the lines of, you know, explore how an overlay zone... you know, explore how an overlay zone could augment our, you know, our other stated strategies. So it's not, I think the way that it's written right now, it feels binary, like we do it or we don't do it, right? And maybe that's not how we should be approaching it. Maybe we explore it with the intent of looking at it as part of a larger suite of solutions that could work more in concert together. And so I want to throw that out there as a potential, you know, way to kind of thread the needle around the, you know, still wanting to do due diligence, but also acknowledging that there's clear support on council to strongly consider this as a solution. So put that out there. And, oh, actually, I wasn't asking a question. I was making a comment. It happens. It happens to the best of us. Okay, here's an actual question. So, so one of the observations I made, kind of generally speaking, is that in the safety element, and a lot of the elements, there are times where we call out, you know, addressing new facilities versus addressing new and existing facilities. And I guess there's a part of me that worries that, and maybe it's an unfounded worry, that we might get hung up on those distinctions if we're calling it out in some places and not others. And so I guess I just want to ask you, and I know I'm not giving you anything like really specific, but I could, like if we go to the safety element, for example, and the side-by-side, there's one I could pull up as just one example.
Do you know which, what that number is by any chance?
I think it's number nine. So, you know, my overall, my overarching question really is about, you know, we want to be creating a resilient and sustainable community. And there are times when we're, you know, when we're addressing policies that are very specific, specifically denoting new facilities versus existing facilities. And I wonder if, you know, if we should just do kind of a double, triple look at where we're calling those, making those distinctions, and make sure that we're not missing anything. Or is this, you know, do you feel like this is already addressed?
Well, I think the term facilities can take many forms. I think in this one, which is sea level rise, flooding, and groundwater rise protection, I think it's looking at improving our existing facilities, but identifying that there's probably need for new facilities in certain areas. And so I think that appears to be the intent of that wording. So I think a lot of it maybe is specific to the issue at hand, where in some cases, we are looking to maintain our existing facilities and augment those. But then in other cases, something such as a topic like this, we've identified the need that our existing facilities, we do need new ones to augment the existing ones that they're, to address something like sea level rise. So I think it might be more subject-specific as to whether we want to be general or maybe identify a difference between new and existing.
Okay, so in that instance, for example, you've already done an assessment and determined that, you know, the existing facility would basically need to be replaced with a new facility.
I, maybe I can ask our Deputy Public Works Director Matt Fabry if he has any thoughts on that. I don't know that it's that specific, but I think it's identifying that we've got our existing facilities, but there's still opportunities for new ones to fully address a topic, say, such as sea level rise.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Those are my questions. Now is the time to open public comment. Deputy Clerk? Oh, I'm sorry. Small pause. Councilmember Hedges has another question.
So I'm looking at the transportation portion under actions, and nowhere do I see anything that says develop. Have we considered developing maps in relations to tremendous amount of transit and shuttles we already have in the area?
Maybe if I could, and look to our public works side. So you're looking for something in there that speaks to mapping existing transit?
I've mapped it for part of the city, so I know a lot of what exists. But I don't see anything in here. It would be helpful if people had a central place rather than going to commute.org or to SAM Trans or to Caltrain or to the myriad other agencies of our 27 regional transit systems to find a path for public transit.
So like developing a centralized map that includes all potential transit options, say, within the city of San Mateo?
There's somewhere around 15 vehicles, different vehicles, in the neighborhood I live in.
Yeah, through the Chair, Brad Underwood, Director of Public Works. I think that would be a challenging item to undertake because of the changes that they would constantly make and keeping up with that. So I think it's best for us to be able to point to their information and try to help people out that way. But for us to take on, generate an overall map through all the various agencies, I think probably would be more effort than it would be worth.
If I may respond, is that okay?
I think, is, do you have a question, additional?
No, it's not a question. I was going to give him some examples, but that's all right.
Okay. Okay. Any additional questions from council? Okay, so we will turn to public comment.
We are now accepting public comment for agenda item number 13. If you have not done so already, please deliver a yellow speaker slip to me. If you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Madam Mayor, we have a total of six public comments, so we'll set the time to three minutes each.
Sure.
And our first, and when I call your name in chambers, please line up against the wall, and we'll call your name in order. Our first speaker in-house will be Ken Abreu, followed by David Light and Lori Watanuki.
Okay, thank you. I'm Ken Abreu, long-term resident, and I'll be also presenting our points from the Sierra Club letter that we sent on the general plan in these two areas, on the circulation element and on the public and facilities element. I think, first of all, the plan has come a long way, and I think that the staff and you all should take pride in where you are. We've come a long way. Still got a ways to go. And so I want to emphasize these points that I think could still be improved, but it's quite a few layers down the way. I think it's really important to continue to encourage the public transportation, the SAM Trans, the Caltrains, and so forth, as being a way of reducing traffic here in San Mateo. I think it's important that we work on pedestrian and bikes and scooters and the alternative ways of transportation, making sure that they're safe and they're available. That'll also reduce traffic congestion in the area. And in linking it to one of the other areas we've been commenting on is the need for affordable housing here near transit. That will reduce the commuting that we have over the bridges into San Mateo, which creates a heck of a mess on 101 and 92, and reduces people jumping off the freeways to come onto our local streets and crowd them out. So that's another element that needs to be fit in with these parts if we're going to be successful on the circulation element. On the public and facilities element, again, I think, you know, we've come a long way here in the general plan. I think the staff and everybody has done a pretty good job there. We've really been emphasizing that, as we talked earlier today about the need for flood control, which is sort of covered in that area, it's also an opportunity to green this city. When we're looking at the creeks, when we're looking at the improvement in drainage and stuff like that, we can do it in a more natural, nature-based way. And taking care of two issues at the same time can save money and make the city a better city for everybody. So we really ask that be emphasized in the general plan as we go forward. The other thing that I think that is new in this one area is the part for seniors, that this city is getting more older, and we need to think about that. And again, it would take us back, I think, to the need for more affordable housing in this area, because the people that are going to have to be here to support those seniors as they get older in their various services are going to be people that need affordable housing. And we don't want them to be living far away and having to drive in to find the housing to live here to support the seniors that are here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Light, followed by Lori Watanuki and Laura Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and members of the City Council. My name is David Light, and I'd like to speak to the circulation element of the draft general plan 2040 regarding street classifications. I'm very concerned that Fifth and Ninth Avenue may be reclassified to arterials. I'm convinced that this will have a negative impact on ongoing traffic calming efforts to reduce cut-through traffic in our neighborhood. These two streets are very different from Hillsdale Boulevard and Alameda de las Polgus. If the city of San Mateo converts Fifth and Ninth Avenues to be arterials, it will increase the capacity of these streets to up to 10,000 to 50,000 cars a day. And this amount of vehicle traffic is just too much to funnel into our small neighborhood. I'm not interested in adding more traffic to Highway 101 or increasing vehicle miles traveled in San Mateo. The reclassification of Fifth and Ninth Avenues to arterials will further increase air pollution in our neighborhood. The addition of two more arterials that do not qualify for traffic calming measures directly opposes our goals for safer streets for seniors, for handicapped persons, bicyclists, and families with children. And if you have a chance to ride your bike down Fifth Avenue, you'll see that it's current, the city of San Mateo is currently, in both directions, painted signs indicating that it's a bicycle boulevard. And I just don't understand how it, being a bicycle boulevard in this narrow street, could be compatible with an arterial, either a major or minor arterial in any way. The proposed communication with Caltrans and the highway administration regarding the coordination of the street classifications with Complete Streets program is certain to be complicated and a long-term project. And we urgently need action on an interim plan because the Kikue Crossing Garage is opening up soon, and that's going to drive a lot of cars down Fifth Avenue unless there's good signage and traffic calming on Fifth. So we need to implement traffic calming now to address cut-through traffic impacts and make our streets safe for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Laura Wood and Erica Powell.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the City Council. My name is Lori Watanuki. And again, my comments will be on the circulation element since we have been focused on this reclassification of Fifth and Ninth to arterial status. Recently, I attended the Drager's Planning Commission meeting. And I asked specifically Public Works if we were a local street. And I was assured at that meeting that we were a local street between Delaware Street, the South Ample. So something has happened. This comes as a real surprise to us. And we feel that just too much traffic is really being funneled to Fourth and South Humboldt. We have high accident numbers. Our goal is to reduce traffic volumes on Sunday, ninth versus increased traffic volumes. And this comes as a shock to me that you want to reclassify us to arterials. Public Works did a trial with speed humps on South Fremont and South El Dorado, which reduced the cut-through traffic on those streets. It was very successful, and we would prefer to have a trial with speed humps on Fifth and Ninth. The NTMP has a very high bar, and the plan needs to be more flexible. We need an interim plan for more residential protections with speed humps before the Kikue Crossing Garage opens, with all this additional development that we're, that has been proposed in the gateway in the downtown. We'd like to see the developer fees be targeted for traffic calming, pedestrian lighting, and the RPPP for the neighborhoods that are impacted. Also, we need an equitable portion of the CIP funding to come to the neighborhoods. The six grade separations in one area will bring too much traffic impacts to the equity priority neighborhoods. We'd either like to see a reduction in the number of grade separations or consider some other areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Laura Wood, followed by Erica Powell.
I think my comments would be better suited towards the October 30th meeting regarding land use. But I'm here tonight, so I'm going to speak out. I want to thank the city for having so many meetings to reach out to the public about the general plan and for the amount of staff that was there to answer questions, especially Mr. Fabry was very patient and explained a lot of different things about Public Works, so thank him. You know, after attending this public meeting on the draft general plan, I was struck that the plan excluded many neighborhoods from future development. I asked one of the speakers why this was the case. They said there was a consensus. I wasn't sure. Who was the consensus that made that development should be placed along transit corridors only? What is the percentage of San Mateans using public transit? I have a question that. We have made a general plan based upon the assumption that folks at these developments are going to be using public transportation. I understand that we need a general plan to secure funds. However, this plan places an unfair burden onto certain flatland neighborhoods of San Mateo to absorb increased noise, air, light pollution, traffic congestion, and safety issues. These are the same neighborhoods that have been passed by in regards to infrastructure maintenance and greening. The hills of San Mateo have easy access to 280 and 92 and a bus line. And I grew up in a city that had free shuttles to the train station from all neighborhoods. I would ask the city to consider amending this plan to include all areas of San Mateo. If you are one of the two flatland neighborhoods deemed as economically challenged or equity something, I can't remember the term, you're pretty much exempt from more growth, but you are adjacent to these areas of increased development, so will be impacted regardless. If the city is going to proceed as planned, these flatland areas need new sewer lateral grants to ensure that the sewers are not overtaxed. As many of the residents have not replaced them. Also, regular maintenance of the streets. Our streets in my neighborhood are terrible, but they are working on them. But we are the last people to get the whatever smooth street funding, free shuttles, creative ideas for green enhancements, and parks, and traffic mitigation. This is an area with many schools where folks deliver kids from all areas of San Mateo. Most of the kids that go to the school across from my street are carded in. Perhaps we need staggered school times, and the city should work with the school district to make this happen, to mitigate traffic. In summation, the current plan is not equitable to all San Mateans. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Erica Powell, followed by Christine Padilla.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. So nice to see you guys. This is my first council meeting in person since the pandemic, so I'm really excited to be here. The theme of this evening is safety, from floods or fires, or in our neighborhood's case, protecting our citizens, kids, and retirees included. We have an opportunity to be proactive and prepare for the increased traffic from all our, all the multi-story and high-density office buildings rising up all over our unique and thriving downtown. Converting Fifth and Ninth Avenues to arterials when we are not even close to hitting the thresholds that would make them qualify as arterials does two things. It allows bigger, heavier vehicles to travel on both streets, requiring more, number one, more frequent and expensive resurfacing in O and M needs, which we know is very expensive and hard to come by, money. And number two, due to existing design policy, it would prevent those two streets from getting the traffic calming that has been necessary for many decades. And with the protected vehicle projections, it's now getting to a critical point. Ninth Avenue, we've seen at Fremont and Ninth, and at Idaho and Ninth, we have seen cars doing wheelies because... doing wheelies because the street is very wide. We need traffic calming. My family and I respectfully request that before this change is built into the general plan, that it gets agendized for council and residents to properly collaborate on the best way to address this. While other cities on the peninsula are making it easier and safer for people to mingle with cars, the San Mateos leadership and planning staff really want to go back to a car-centric era by proposing converting local streets to arterials. Please, Madam Mayor and honorable council members, do not accept staff's recommendation to change this classification without the proper discussion and education, as should have been done via the public engagement process. And I do thank staff, and I do thank everyone that's helped to pull the general plan together to this point. There's been a significant amount of public engagement, but this hasn't gone in front of the general public. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Christine Padilla. Christine, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash, council members and city staff. I'm Christine Padilla, Director of Build Up San Mateo County, a multi-sector initiative working to sustain, expand, and improve childcare facilities. In 2022, the Childcare Partnership Council retained BRION Economics to complete a needs assessment that estimated the childcare supply and demand at the city and county level. The results found San Mateo had a shortage of just over 2,500 childcare spaces for children zero to 12, with the shortage projected to grow to over 3,300 spaces by 2032. This shortage is for families of all income levels. For families with lower incomes, there is a subsidized care, there is subsidized care for only 42% of the children ages zero through four, who would qualify for state childcare subsidies. The city needs an additional 608 childcare spaces to help lower-income San Mateo residents obtain affordable childcare. I want to thank the city and dedicated staff for their continued leadership on this issue with programs like the Childcare Facilities Fund. We appreciate all you've done in support of working families, children, and educators who care for them. We are especially grateful some of our suggested general plan policies and actions are being recommended in the public services and facilities element. We appreciate being heard, and we appreciate your consideration and stand ready to help support these efforts, along with our leadership partners, the Four Cs, First Five, the Childcare Partnership Council, and Silicon Valley Community Foundation. Thank you so much for your thoughtful consideration and time.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment.
Thank you so much. And thank you to Executive Director Padilla and your representation on the childcare issue in San Mateo. And I was also very pleased to see complete integration of the recommendations from Build Up. So thank you, Director Dahl, for that. I heard some questions from the public that I thought maybe we wanted to provide a little bit of a platform to to get clear about in terms of the 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 understanding of what these the adoption of these arterial maps and their impact and the potential timeline would be. So I wanted to throw that question back to staff and make sure that everyone's working with the same and clear information on impact and timeline. Welcome, Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad Underwood, Director of Public Works. Yeah, the street classification map is is getting information from existing maps. We're not changing the classification. Well, it is changing in our map, but it's not a change that we're initiating necessarily. It's a change due to the existing map from Caltrans that we have. The classification has been generated many years ago. I'm not sure how long ago, but we don't agree necessarily with that change, but it is affects funding and it affects some of the enforcement that we can do on that street if we don't comply with that map. So that's why we recommend this change for now. I will ensure you also that in order to get higher volumes on that street, it would have to be physically widened. Right now, it's, as you know, it's a two-lane street, and so there is no intention on the city to do any of that either. So and then there is, as Bethany had alluded to, there is a methodology, we can reach out to Caltrans and FHWA to make changes to that map. We intend to do that through further study after the complete streets plan is developed, and we hope to do that on some key streets that are being changed, because there are several, not just Fifth and Ninth, that are having these change made.
So so just to make it really clear, some of the concerns we're hearing from community is that there will be increased heavy heavy vehicles and and, you know, increased traffic. And so what I hear you saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that essentially we're we're defaulting to an existing map that will allow us greater access to funds, and and that there are no plans to widen the streets, which would be required to actually support any kind of substantial change in use or traffic patterns.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hedges.
Brad, excuse me, but I heard you say enforcement. Does that mean if we don't comply, I don't know, I'm asking that we might have problems citing people for speeding or even running stop signs?
That is a possibility. Yes, correct.
So it would actually, if we don't do it, it would reverse the safety aspect of the street.
Exactly what our concern is of not complying with the map.
Okay, thank you for that. I thought that's what you meant.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Hedges. Another question that I heard from community, which I, you know, is well taken, is that there are just overall, the the study areas contemplate concentrating growth and intensity in the study areas. And, you know, I think that for those of us who live, you know, in or close to those study areas, there's rightly so questions about the commiserate growth and support for infrastructure in in and around those areas as well. And so, you know, one of the one of the intentions of of making that dashboard of infrastructure improvements visible and and applied across the board, I think, is really to to provide more accountability and more transparency from the city's side in terms of what we are actually, the investments that are actually coming forward, where they're going, and how that may or may not match with, you know, with the areas of growth. Was that some of the thinking behind that that idea that you heard from community?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think the key here is that we are looking at at the full scope of city services and infrastructure as part of this plan, because obviously we need to ensure that levels of service, infrastructure, all the other pieces that can support new development are rising up concurrently with this new development. And so I think an example of of kind of the study area model is with our complete streets planning effort that's moving forward, and we are looking at specifically anticipated growth in the study areas. And then that's influencing the the transit quarters that we look at to ensure that we can provide adequate capacity and meet the needs of where that development's taking place. It also focuses our efforts on where we can look for opportunities to increase opportunities for bike and ped and transit and other opportunities that will get cars off the street. So yeah, we do need to look at it comprehensively, and the the policies and our circulation element, as well as our other elements, are looking at it through that lens.
Thank you so much. Alex, did you want to add to that?
What we're really trying to do, Mayor, is synthesize all our all our plans to be under a broader umbrella overall. And so that's the work that I know in talking with our transportation team today, it's what we're focusing and really looking through with all our consultants to make sure everything is feeding back up holistically into the broader plan. And I know we'll talk a little bit further about that, the next item, this evening.
Thanks so much. Okay, well, with that, we'll close public comment, and this is the time for council deliberation. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Hedges would like to begin. No, Councilmember Lorraine.
I guess I'm getting pointed at, so I guess I better go first. Overall, as I felt in our previous meeting when we talked about noise and open space and recreation and other elements, overall, I'm 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 pleased with staff suggestions. I'm pleasantly, you know, I'm pleased to see that we're both integrating a variety and diversity of comments from our, you know, from members of the public, either in person or online, from our general plan subcommittee and planning commission, and from subject matter experts, our, you know, partner agencies such as SAM Trans and CalFire, and from Build Up San Mateo County. I feel like this 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 proposal from staff in terms of making changes to our draft plan shows a great gathering of inputs and and, you know, an effort to listen and really try to move us forward and make a better overall draft general plan. So I I appreciate the effort that's been put in. I'm in support of of all of staff recommendations to edit the general plan update, including the new action in in public services and facilities, action 5.13 to track progress. I think that's a great idea and in service to outreach, accountability, visibility, as was mentioned. So I guess, you know, my only, and I'm generally satisfied with the conversation we've had tonight, that overall, I feel like we're interested in, you know, as the mayor highlighted, pursuing through the complete streets plan and and more actions to come, a, you know, a continued focus on finding ways to, you know, allow for a variety of modes of transportation in our city to allow people to get where they need to go, that we're planning for streets to generally be reducing their focus on auto traffic in in many cases. And so, and I'm pretty, pretty satisfied with where we are on the safety element with regard to sea level rise planning. I feel like the bones are there for sure. You know, we have, you know, right at the at the front of the the safety goal related to sea level rise and kind of, you know, the the policies and actions underneath it, an interest in, I would like to see if I could get back to it to to reiterate, but but really, I feel that the the an interest in integrating sea level rise planning in all of of what we're doing in the general plan, in the safety element, and throughout in our zoning ordinances and more, and and an action to explore a sea level rise overlay zone is, is, you know, within, you know, is 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 listening to to guidance that we've received, and and I feel like is headed in the right direction. You know, I, as the mayor mentioned earlier, I think like there seems to be a strong council support in ensuring that we do indeed take that next step, that we continue to move forward, explore what options are available to us to ensure that we're, you know, continuing to take in state-of-the-art science and thinking on ensuring that this city is going to be as as resilient to climate impacts as possible. I guess my only, you know, sort of question slash interest in deliberation is, and maybe collaborating with Director Dahl and other staff, is is to see like if if we feel like where we are is is sufficient, or if there might be, you know, an opportunity to make a small tweak to some language within that sort of vertical, if you will, that sort of, you know, reflects this council interest in ensuring that we establish something, you know, whether it's an overlay zone or one of the other, you know, a variety of options that One Shoreline is is proposing to cities along along the peninsula.
It seems maybe there's a possible suggestion coming from our city manager.
Just a point of clarity, and I'm looking at Zach real quickly, because I know in working with Len Matterman, who's the executive director with One Shoreline, my understanding is that One Shoreline has provided feedback throughout this process. Is that accurate, Zach?
Yes.
So the overall approach, so if we're really looking at just, we're asking our regional leaders in this area to comment, and so I believe we've incorporated, and they feel fine with the direction that we're headed, Zach?
Yes, they have. We at the at the staff level had looked at adding explore rather than a more committal level with regard to the overlay zone, but I think the key is if we want to commit to it more specifically and then explore the mechanics of how we would best apply within San Mateo, I think that's completely reasonable. And if there's council council interest there, I think that's an easy change we can make, and we can work with One Shoreline to come up with the best language, but if the overall desire is to strengthen that particular commitment in how we use it, we could definitely do that.
And then through the mayor, Director Underwood, do you want to come up here? I know you just spoke with Len just about the sea level rise aspect and our, you know, just how it's going to work with, I believe, Burlingame and how we connect into it just overall. You want to provide an update to the council on that so they can better understand the approach?
Yep. Thank you. Through the mayor, Brad Underwood, Director of Public Works. Yeah, the One Shoreline is has an effort right now to look at some levy out beyond the current bank nor along Burlingame and Milbury. As part of that, they've offered to look at extending that potentially in front of the San Mateo property boundary over to Coyote Point. So that's an effort that they're going to do for us to, and they're working on the environmental document right now, so they're doing a scoping meeting, and they'll move forward with that. But we've asked them to include us in that effort so that we could make a decision later on.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I think we're we're very nearly there. So, you know, this is this is maybe splitting hairs a little bit, as the mayor mentioned, but I appreciate the discussion we just had and would would encourage considering potentially strengthening the language a little bit if were applicable, but, you know, certainly it seems as though council staff are aligning with One Shoreline and its goals, and that makes me happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So in given the lead, or if we could keep our comments focused on any specifics that you want to see or suggest? Councilmember Hedges.
First, I want to say this is a tremendous amount of effort on your part and the staff. I'm really so appreciative of everything you've done, all your efforts to keep me informed when I've asked you questions. Very appreciative of it.
when I've asked you questions, very appreciative of it. I just wanted to bring up the, I saw some public suggestions on bike lanes, and I fall square with their suggestions. We need to find a way to do our bike lanes safely without taking away parking. I think Humboldt gave us a blueprint for what not to do. And so as we go forward, I want to find ways, you know, one of the suggestions I've made several times and different, is to do the bike lanes on the inside of parking and find some space, see if it's taking part of the parking to do it. And by parking, I mean the dirt on the inside of the curb. On the issue I brought up on transportation, Director Underwood's clearly correct that the schedules change tremendously, to that point, MTC never included them in their route finder. However, Commute.org found a way to do it, they just use Google, because their maps tell you exactly on the schedules and everything. But I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting make people aware of what's going on in transportation and where to go, because that's one of the recommendations, and we have something similar in, I had it up, C2 through about C7, which talks around that. And just to give you an example, where I live, the Lincoln Shuttle, the North Foster City Shuttle, the Marys Island Shuttle, 251 Bus, the 250 Bus, and the Campus Drive Shuttle, it mentions getting to the community college. The 251 Bus takes people there and so does the Campus Shuttle, but nobody knows that in my neighborhood. I send out emails all the time with this map, and I always say, here's the current schedule, but check your schedules, they change. I mean, we can do something like that, but just a central place, if somebody types in transportation, San Mateo pops up with, these are your options, go check them out. And one of the speakers tonight was absolutely correct, most people will not take transit unless we make it easy. I mean, I can get my car and tell Siri to take me somewhere, and I don't even have to think about it, unless Siri makes a mistake, and then I'm in trouble. So it takes planning to take public transit, and even planning during the day after you've gone, because sometimes routes, something happens. And again, I'm happy, very happy with what you've told me tonight about collaborating with One Shoreline, actually paying attention to what they're doing, looking at how we can do it like Burlingame did, but for our own particular uses. And I'm very happy with the overlay, I think that's very important. So again, kudos for what you've done, I really appreciate it. Thank you. That's it for me.
Other comments?
Thank you, through the mayor. Just a couple of general comments about circulation and first, that I think what I've heard from the community and myself agree, that there are lots of very specific changes and additions, and it's great in the general plan, but as you go through it and do your final scrub, really think about the impact that the development has on circulation. And I know you do that, I know that's core, but how it all integrates into the quality of life, into what happens in neighborhoods, what happens downtown. Sometimes it's not a specific policy change, it's what will Kikuk Crossing mean for the neighborhoods, or from a residential parking perspective versus a traffic perspective, and how does it coordinate with other projects? So that the building and development are not considered separately from the circulation, because most of the frustration I've heard from people is not that we don't want taller buildings, is we want to make sure the impact of more people is going to be taken care of. So just as a general 30,000-foot, keep thinking that as a North Star. In terms of public facilities, the, you know, the whole, all the policies that built up San Mateo gave about new childcare, fantastic, so glad that you incorporated, and thank you very much. And I would encourage the policies to continue to look at other things, like new ways of approaching childcare. Our childcare funds are for capital improvement, and we can help when you want to expand, but what about if you wanted to help subsidize the childcare cost of your childcare workers, so that would open up more spaces so more people could bring their kids? So just how do we really be as creative as possible and not box ourselves in? And just a general comment about our public facilities as we think about them, be they the library or any of the new buildings or old buildings we have, our goal should be to make sure that our public facilities make us proud. I mean, that's just so important as a North Star. People talk about the library main branch that way, they talk about other things, but how do we use that as an evaluation criteria? And then I totally approve, you know, support the new policy about progress tracking, the more we can track, the better. And then finally, thank you very much for taking very seriously the request to enhance the focus on seniors in everything and trying to bring it together in a way that everyone in the community can see. So I think that's great. Thank you very much.
Great thing about going second to last is there's not a lot to cover. Again, I've been able to cross off a lot. Just want to reiterate a lot of what has been said, appreciate the circulation maps. Do want to make sure we put an emphasis on the east-to-west bridge, particularly the Hillsdale Boulevard corridor, street calming, and having input with CalTrans. Obviously, CalTrans is going to do what they're going to do, but I think what has kind of taken aback so many neighbors is that, you know, they changed the map without any feedback or, you know, buy-in from the city. So not necessarily a general plan thing, but something that I think we should try to look at going forward is, when CalTrans is going to change their roadway map and roadway classification map, I think we'd like to have some sort of input or at least knowledge of what the changes are that are coming. Appreciate all the work under safety, appreciate the public facilities, looking at upgrades to our electrical grid, thank you for all that's been put in for seniors and aging, and also for childcare. Also want to make sure that as we add in things for seniors and aging and childcare, that we continue to collaborate with our park and rec, because that's a lot of resources that we can put into that. That's pretty much all my thoughts. That and just making sure that as we grow, you know, we're not, we're putting away money for capital improvements, projects, funding, and not, and again, I know that goes to the budgeting, but making sure that the verbiage is in the plan that we're planning for tomorrow, not reactive to changes. We know that we have to keep our city vibrant, and we know we have to keep, you know, putting aside money for when buildings have to be replaced or maintained. And thank you so much for all your staff has put together, this has been a great presentation and a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you. I join council in applauding the efforts of staff and community, and I think that anyone who's participated in this process, whether it was just a read or maybe a comment or attending one of the pop-up events, I really do believe that all of us can find our fingerprint on it, at least in one, you know, one place. And that is, you know, that's a real testament that we've done a good job listening and that we're reflecting, you know, the real vision of the community and capturing it and synthesizing it, and as our city manager said, taking, you know, really significant steps to bring together a lot of disparate plans that have been on the shelf, that have, you know, various levels of scopes and boundaries that haven't been talking to each other necessarily, in some places directly contradicting each other, and actually bringing this all under one umbrella vision. And so that, you know, that in itself is really commendable, because it will bring us all together, you know, pulling the rope in the same direction, across every department, across this entire organization, and I believe that it'll take this city forward. And so I'm really excited to see the progress that's been made. I, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Newsom's call-out about the budget specifically. You know, I've been, I've been trying to raise revenue for this city for some time now, and, you know, and I think that we, you know, we've been very conservative in our budgeting processes, and I think, I don't know if it's so much a matter of stashing money away, because we don't really have that, we, we're not really in a position to sit on it, but proactively raising revenue, knowing that we need to look at life cycle of facilities and infrastructure for a long-range planning, probably beyond a 10-year period, more like a 50-year horizon. And so, you know, I think that taking that, you know, that kind of higher-level budgeting approach and applying it to our goal of being, building resiliency in this city and, you know, into the future, is, I think, going to kind of touch on the hallmarks of what I think Councilmember Newsom is getting at, and I heard other support for that as well. And so, you know, I think, I, you know, is that clear in terms of my feedback specifically about budgeting?
Yes, definitely, I'm definitely hearing that, and when we're done, I'll reiterate some of the points that I've heard, but yeah, I definitely understand that.
Okay, great. So I'll leave it at that, you know, and do you have what you need from us, or are you going to do a report out?
Yes, let me go ahead and do a report out. I've heard, so overall, with the staff recommendations for each of the three elements, I heard consensus on moving forward with that suite of edits. There appeared to be consensus on looking and I think working with One Shoreline on how we can strengthen the policy related to the sea level rise overlay zone, strengthen it beyond explore, so we can definitely do that. Also, the concept of, and I think this would be looking in general in our public services and facilities element, this forward-looking investment to our facilities. We can definitely look at the various policies and actions and making sure they're in alignment And then also support for that proposed action that came up tonight for the progress tracker to go into public services, and I believe those, so those are what we have that we'll be moving forward with. Did I miss anything that was discussion on?
It looks like you got it all. Thank you. Thank you, Director Dahl.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So thank you, Joanna Johnson, Place Works. Good to see you again. We, I want to just do a check in terms of how are we doing, do we need a break? Okay, I think we'll take another five-minute break and see you all back here in five.
Good discussion.
And then I guess that T is right in the face. You know what we want to look at.
Welcome back. Right now, we're on Old Business, item number 14, Citywide Complete Streets Plan update. We have with us Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner, and...
Suzie Huffstatter.
Suzie Huffstatter, welcome. And we'll start with the staff presentation, is that right? If you could give us one moment, I'm sorry.
Okay, apologies about that. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Sue Ellen Atkinson, Principal Transportation Planner with the Public Works Department. And I have with me tonight Suzie Huffstatter from Fair &amp; Peers Consulting Firm. Tonight, we'll be presenting an update on the San Mateo Citywide Complete Streets Plan. So this evening, we'll be doing an introduction of the project, what the project goals are, objectives, et cetera, summary of outreach to date, go over our draft plan policies and request feedback from City Council, go through recommendations from the project, including high-needs corridors for evaluation, discuss next steps, and then request council feedback. And so tonight, we're looking for council feedback on two items in this presentation. So the first is confirmation of our high-needs corridors, which were included as part of the agenda packet. What we're asking tonight is, does this align with the community needs and your experience and what you've heard from your constituents? And also requesting feedback on the identified corridors. And then we'll also be asking for feedback on the draft policies that we'll be presenting this evening. So first, you've heard quite a lot about Complete Streets Plan this evening already. What is a Complete Streets Plan? The Complete Streets Plan will be a comprehensive playbook to help the city implement complete streets, which are roadways that make travel safe for people of all modes, including driving, biking, walking, taking transit, et cetera. So this plan will be taking all of our existing single-mode transportation plans and our green infrastructure plan, which are fantastic plans that really give us a roadmap for implementing single-mode projects and giving us an opportunity to prioritize across all of those modes and determine how to implement projects that address different ways of getting around the city. So in doing that, the Complete Streets Plan needs to actually be implementable so that we can take those projects and implement them on our roadways. And finally, it needs to be built with a collaborative process with our stakeholders, both internal and external. So we'll be discussing our community outreach efforts to date as part of that collaborative process. So what will the Complete Streets Plan include? It includes all of the modes of transportation within the public right-of-way. It includes getting around by car, goods movement, transit, biking and walking. It also includes green infrastructure, which can be built in conjunction with transportation plans. So it includes all aspects of the public right-of-way in terms of building transportation systems. It does not include things underground like sewer utility, stormwater, et cetera. In terms of process and timeline, we're about halfway to two-thirds through the development of this plan. So we will be going through our network recommendations, our priority high-needs corridors recommendations tonight, and then Phase 1 of community engagement, which we recently completed. So moving straight into that, as I mentioned, we completed Phase 1 of engagement. We have a community engagement plan for this project that expands the full length of the project. So we have three phases of the project, and in turn, three phases of community engagement. So this first phase of community engagement was really focused on hearing from the community in terms of what the needs are, what the concerns are, how people get around, where they'd like to go, and what areas they feel safe and what areas they don't feel safe. As part of that engagement, we had a lot of different opportunities to interact with the public. So first, we really made an effort to develop relationships with our stakeholders in the city. And those stakeholders represented different audiences, including those that don't necessarily interact with the city at all of our outreach opportunities, including the Latino community, the youth community, Paratransit Coordinating Council, and other representatives. So in April and May, we held nine stakeholder interviews with those communities to determine how best to outreach to those that they serve. We also hosted focus groups in partnership with some of our stakeholder members. So we hosted a focus group in partnership with the school district to reach young families and with Mid Peninsula Housing to primarily reach the renter community. Those focus groups were, one was held in Spanish and one was multilingual, and we were able to outreach to a number of participants through those options. We also held some active engagement tours, including a walk-in transit tour and a citywide bike tour. And then we wrapped up with pop-up events at the city's Fourth of July celebration and the College of San Mateo Farmers Market. We also hosted an online engagement platform through Social Pinpoint. We had over 500 unique visitors to the map, including 107 people commenting with over 320 comments collected. At the same time as this online map was available, we also were collecting online feedback for another public works project, the Local Roadway Safety Plan. And given the timing of those projects, we're able to share data back and forth between the two plans, which really helped in gathering additional feedback. We collated all of the engagement comments that we received through the online mapping and our focus groups, our stakeholder interviews, et cetera. And we're able to really start pinpointing some areas of the city where we were getting a lot of feedback and getting feedback where people felt that we needed to make some improvements in terms of transportation. So you can see some clusters rising up around our Caltrain stations, also in our downtown area, and in some of our neighborhoods. Overall, through engagement, we heard a few key themes that kept repeating, first being safety. Safety for bicyclists and pedestrians were the highest priority discussed, and also the need for traffic calming measures and more safety education was voiced. Connectivity was a key theme that repeated constantly, I would say. The need for connectivity throughout the city for different modes of transportation. So if people did want to take transit somewhere, they were able to get where they wanted to go. Congestion, I think, is not a surprising theme to come up. We had a lot of comments about congestion and about the need for making other modes of transportation available to reduce the congestion on the roadways. And finally, we heard a lot about accessibility and the need to improve mobility for those with disabilities and for our senior community. And with that, I'll hand it over to Suzie to start walking you through our draft Complete Streets policies.
Thanks, Sue Ellen. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me. So we'll just dive in here on the Complete Streets policies. So why does this plan need policies? We've just looked at the general plan draft, and we already have a lot of really good policy guidance here in the city. So why do we have a special set of plan policies for the Complete Streets? So first, we really need a clear and vision-driven direction. You've already heard about the goals of the plan, which focus on safety, comfort, connectivity, and access, equity, and community outreach. And the policy framework that we're drafting now with you is really to take those goals and provide a policy framework that will drive towards the recommendations that will come in the next phase of the planning effort. Second, it's really important that the transportation plan here in the Complete Streets Plan is aligning with state and regional plans and policies. There's a lot of new guidance coming from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and FHWA that are strongly linked with funding, and it's important to have really clear and emphatic city-level plans and policies that align with those. And finally, for guidance for implementation, policies really set a clear how on what the city staff and developer teams and other stakeholders need to do specifically with the plan and help to provide clear direction on those tough decisions. So in the process of developing the Complete Streets Plan policies, we have, as I mentioned, we've really been working on looking at all the different local, federal, state, and regional policies that come to bear on city streets. So the general plan draft is really the key North Star, as we say, for this project, and also a variety of other plans listed on the left, including the Climate Action Plan and several different MTC policies and plans. So the four policy frameworks that we're looking at today are intended to provide a set of guiding principles behind a set of additional policy actions with each of them, which we'll walk through. So these are prioritize safety for all modes, fund and implement projects, engage our communities, and rebalance Complete Streets priorities. So first, prioritize safety for all modes. This is directly aligned with the draft general plan you were just discussing in setting a really aggressive zero fatal and severe injury collisions by 2030 goal. This is a guiding framework for the entire city, and in transportation, we use what's called the safe system approach to get there. This is an FHWA-led national effort to really shift the way transportation planning and engineering is done, together with a wraparound set of community programs. And so this policy really just says really emphatically that safety is that top priority. Second is rebalancing Complete Streets priorities. This goes along with what Sue Ellen has said about making sure that the street network is useful and functional for people using all modes, whether driving, biking, walking, taking transit. And so the design manual under process right now as part of the project is developing street types that essentially take land use and circulation needs and create a set of street types that are descriptive of how the streets are used. And then we'll be developing the street priorities based on those needs. So, for example, one street may have higher priority on parking and transit, and another street may have higher priority on circulation. For example, approaching freeways, there may not be as much parking, and so we would have a different set of priorities on those streets. So this is really about making sure that each modal network is coherent and makes sense, and that there's also priorities for the public right-of-way that are aligned with goals with safety always at the top. Fund and implement Complete Streets is a really kind of action-oriented policy, and it has a lot of strategies in there related to coordination, capital spending plan requests. And there's also some important guidance and policy frameworks within this that are critical for making sure that developers are clear on what they're required to do. It goes hand-in-hand with the design document that we're also developing so that a developer is clear on what they need to build on the public right-of-way adjacent to their property. They will also be aiming to establish guidance on what types of projects require council input and what staff have discretion to implement based on the existing policy in this document. And finally, engaging our communities is the fourth policy framework. This is really meant to ensure an inclusive, consistent, and accessible outreach standard across all projects. So this doesn't necessarily mean that every single project will have the same level of outreach. You know, you wouldn't like do a huge number of in-person events to stripe one crosswalk, but it does set the expectation that there's clear communication and consistent communication about how people will be asked their input and how that input will be used. So for that striping of a crosswalk, it's probably just an informational type of outreach. And then for a larger corridor study or major plan, there would be a more robust outreach effort. And the point of this policy is to say that there needs to be that spectrum and that it needs to be clear which one it is for a given project. So to move on towards the recommendations segment, we'll just dive in on the needs assessment here. So as part of the needs assessment, our team took all of these network plans that we've been talking about, the bike plan, the PED plan, the green infrastructure plan, and really layered on what corridors have high needs. And so this includes all of those modal plans, also safety data, equity data, and community input. And we're essentially having a color code of what streets are popping out as having high needs. So that's high modal needs, high equity needs, and high safety needs. And so while we see some streets popping out, this is really a lot of really small segments, and it's not so useful unto itself. And so the next slide shows what we have done is essentially what we call a smoothing process. And so the turquoise-numbered corridors, there's 22 of those, are kind of the places where we see a lot of red and orange, and we've smoothed them into coherent corridors that make sense. So those are our high-needs corridors. And then the lighter-colored circles, like 31 and 32 down at the bottom, you can see as examples, are areas where there was a very high-priority project in a modal plan, like the TOD pedestrian access plan, and also the bike plan and other types of modal plans. So those were super-high priority, but they didn't necessarily rise to the top in this totally multimodal effort, but we still wanted to make sure that those high-priority modal projects got called out. And then you'll also note that downtown and north-central are kind of faded out here because of their separate ongoing planning efforts. So this is an example of how each of these high-needs corridors are being treated in the draft plan and process. So there's a kind of what we call a cut sheet for each one that describes what those modal priorities are, what the previously proposed projects were and have been, provides a kind of corridor-wide description of what the corridor does, who it serves, and then where there are changes in major street widths or major changes we're segmenting to say, in this segment of the corridor, we make this type of recommendation really strongly based on the previous modal plans. And in other segments, if it's different, then we'll have a different recommendation. Where there are highly complex corridors and a lot of community feedback, we're going to be doing a next round of recommendation development that really dives deeper and provides concept designs and cost estimates. So that will help to really unpack what's going on on really tricky corridors like Hillsdale and Almeida's Pool Gus and others, where we're just hearing a lot of community feedback. And we'll be doing a deeper dive on those to develop more specific concepts for your feedback later in the process. That's me still, sorry. So as next steps, we're going to be, as I just mentioned, taking that list of streets, the 22 you saw there, and developing 10 priority projects. Those will be with the more thorough concepts, and those will go back out to the community for feedback. Right now, we're doing community outreach on those high-needs corridors. And then meanwhile, there's a design manual in progress that will kind of be the pairing for that policy framework and really set the roadmap of how to implement the policy in design.
And back to me. We took a similar presentation to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission last week, so we wanted to share a brief overview of their high-level comments. They were asked the same questions that we're asking of Council tonight. With regard to the high-needs corridors, there was interest to include near-miss data in terms of collisions that were avoided, as feasible. That data is not necessarily collected regularly. We have gotten some information through the outreach, both for this plan and for the local roadway safety plan, that we can make an effort to include if it has not yet. And then also a request to confirm connectivity to key destinations like parks and schools. Primarily, that's been done in the modal plans that feed into this plan. For example, the TOD pedestrian access plan and the Bike Master Plan, but we will take another look at that as needed. With regard to the draft plan policies, we received confirmation of safety and funding as being included as policies, a recommendation to consider options for policies that are a higher level. North Star was the recommendation given for these, and then to consider including health, equity, and resilience as policies. So again, the questions that we're asking of Council tonight are twofold. First is confirmation of the high-needs corridors with the question of, does it align with what you're familiar with and what the community needs are, and feedback on the identified corridors. And then with regard to the draft policies, general feedback on those draft policies. And with that, we'll conclude the staff presentation, and Suzie and I are available for any questions.
Thank you. And wow, I loved having all those pictures and icons and keys in that presentation. Just really well organized. Thank you so much. Okay, so this is questions for Council. Who would like to begin? Questions?
I'm tripping up there again.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. Suzie and Sue Ellen, I was looking at the graphic with the high-need corridors, and I appreciated Suzie mentioning that like towards the south. Excuse me, we have a couple quarters noted, this 31 and 32, for example, that indicate some priority projects that aren't necessarily within the quarters, but I guess I was just curious what number 31 was in the Sugarloaf area.
We can look that up and get back to you. We don't have that on hand, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. I also noticed that in the presentation, for example, there was an acknowledgement that a large density of comments and inputs related to Hillsdale Caltrain Station and like its area. And I just wanted to confirm or get a sense of whether, for example, the high-need corridor number 20, which appears to be 28th, is including Hillsdale Caltrain and potentially a little farther east over to Delaware? And if not, why not?
Great question. Great question. Corridor 20 is 28th Avenue. It is from Alameda to El Camino. We have a current project that we're working on on 28th Avenue between Edison and East Keine that does include access to the Caltrain Station, as well as recommendations coming out of the TOD pedestrian access plan related to access to the Hillsdale Caltrain Station. So, the, since that project is underway, currently looking at multimodal access on 28th Avenue, we have not included it as one of the high-needs corridors. And on 20th, sorry, that's late. Corridor 20 on 28th, there are overlapping modal priorities for that segment.
Okay, thank you.
Through to the mayor, I have looked up the other number, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Can you say, was it 31 or 32 you were asking about?
Yeah.
So, 31 is the Sugarloaf neighborhood, and it has specific crosswalk and streetscape recommendations from the TOD pedestrian access plan.
Okay, so I suppose I should look into that to get a better sense of all that's being suggested there, but I appreciate that. Let's see. I guess I had one kind of higher-level question, because it seems like, as you noted, one of the priorities is prioritizing, sorry, one of the policies is prioritizing safety for all modes, which I fully support. And I got the sense, too, that when we're looking at this, these high-need corridors, that safety, if I remember, it was like a metric that was amplified when looking at these quarters specifically. And I guess I was just curious if, like, I feel, you know, I and other council members may have some comments on the particular quarters, but whether you found that there was a shift, you know, any big shifts or changes you saw from that process in terms of which quarters stuck out, you know, in contrast to the previous plans we've worked on?
In applying the higher weighting to safety, I, in my opinion, I did not see a big shift per se from what we were seeing in our prior plans, because those prior plans were all inputs into this plan. So, these corridors are where we have recommended projects from the pedestrian master plan, or the bike master plan, or their transit routes, et cetera. What we saw when applying the higher weighting for safety is that we had more coverage citywide in terms of corridors that rose to the top, as opposed to when we had everything weighted equally, including equity, including comfort, I think was one. But in relation to our existing plans, since those are in and of themselves inputs into this, we're not seeing anything drastically different.
Thank you. No further questions.
Councilmember Newsome.
Thank you. Through to the mayor. In terms of safety, you may have this, but there were so many graphics, I might have missed it. But when you look at each corridor, do you have a kind of diagnosis or a look back as to how many car, bicycle, and pedestrian incidents or accidents may have occurred there over the last five or 10 years?
I can start off, and then Susie can chime in. Collision data and other networks such as the youth high-injury network were all inputs into creating the citywide needs map. So, for those corridors that rose to the top in terms of being our high-needs corridors, those are corridor projects that have a high need for safety improvements, for modal improvements, et cetera. So, all of that collision data is essentially baked in, for lack of a better word.
Fantastic. And I was hoping you were going to say that. I'm probably going to get more into this when we talk about connectivity, but one thing I've heard about is CSM, which is our, you know, is technically outside of San Mateo, but is, you know, just above and to the west of us, is kind of an island. It's very uphill. It doesn't have a lot of access. It's hard to get to by bicycle or walking in it, because it's all uphill. When you go on the campus, unlike most college campuses, there's not as many people riding their bikes. And Samtrans has reduced the amount of routes going to CSM by more than 50% in the last few years. So, I was just curious, has there been any thought or, because I don't see a corridor kind of driving people in that direction, but I would like to see if that could be something that we could do a better job at.
Yeah, in terms of CSM, that's a great opportunity for e-bikes, frankly. And we have, I believe we have a facility recommended in the Bike Master Plan for that roadway. In looking at the likelihood in why it's not identified as a high-need corridor is because it didn't quite come to the top in terms of safety or in terms of modal priorities that are conflicting. But I think that we do address that in some of our singular modal mode plans.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Hedges.
So, thank you for your comments on 28th Street. There's been a lot of traffic calming there already, and I think that's a great idea. Actually, a 250 bus has decided, instead of going up Hillsdale, to go up 28th Street through the last iteration. So, questions regarding curb cuts for pedestrian safety? What type of curb cuts are we thinking about? Because there are basically two kinds. The rounded kind, which actually throws a wheelchair into traffic from the opposite way. And then there's, like we have downtown, where you have one curb cut for each way. So, obviously, you've picked up my preference from my statement. So, what type of curb cuts are we proposing in this?
The pedestrian master plan really lays out recommendations in terms of where to apply curb extensions. So, that would still give us the roadmap, if you will, for where those are prioritized. And the complete streets plan, if there are roadways where there are conflicting priorities or limited right-of-way or something of that nature, for example, and there are curb extensions recommended and there's transit and high volume of vehicles, then part of the prioritization may be, how do we do those pedestrian improvements while maintaining enough right-of-way for the other modes? But at this time, we've not gotten to the level, for example, of specific improvements like curb extensions.
Yeah, well, I'm not particularly talking about the, even when you don't have extensions, there's ways that the curb cuts get laid out.
Understood.
And one of them is dangerous, and the other one isn't. So, also, I saw something in there that talked about removing parking along Delaware. Are we planning on doing that?
I think that was in the example.
I think it was slide 23. I think I wrote down the right number. It's in small letters.
I see. It is, thank you.
Which is probably wise.
Yeah, that recommends how to implement a separated bike lane on Delaware. We do have some options in terms of right-of-way along that roadway, so it may be, it may include parking, it may include lane reduction, it may include narrowing of sidewalks, something like that. This is an example for right now. It's not necessarily the final product.
I'll have comments on it later. Just for your verification, for four years, on the 3 to 11 shift, I rode my bike both ways on that whole stretch. So, I understand how important bike lanes are there. 19th Avenue Fashion Island, there's a bike lane that's being planned right now. Can you talk about what's being done for automobiles? And it's very constricted. I'll give you an example. Our city manager was going to a meeting on the east side and found out the traffic was backed up all the way to Pacific. So, even after the pandemic, we're still having big issues with that stretch, because it's really the only way to the east side outside of the freeway.
Can I, maybe I'll just interject a little bit, because we're getting a little bit off track of the complete streets plan in terms of specific, specific plans for specific streets. And so, I just, I just want to make sure that we're staying on track.
I kind of disagree with that, because other people were talking, talked about specific streets like 31 and others. And I just want to know what's planned, if we can talk about it. If you don't know, that's fine.
I can respond. 19th Avenue Fashion Island is a current project that's underway in coordination with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority and Samtrans. So, we're looking at implementation of a Class 4 separated bike lane and a mobility hub. We are currently in the feasibility design for that facility, so at this time, I can't answer what the plan is, because we're evaluating different alternatives. But we are midway through that feasibility study.
So, for the east side, that's a major flashpoint. I hear it all the time.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay. Additional questions? Okay. I have a high-level question. What, you know, for folks that, you know, might have concerns about specific streets or feel that their street is high-need, and then it doesn't make the cut for our definition of high-need, what, you know, how, what happens then? I guess I just want to make sure that we're being really fully transparent in this process in terms of what are the, you know, what are the rules or guidelines that we're establishing in making these designated definitions of high-need? You know, I struggle to zoom into the map and feel 100% confident that I was reading the street right. And so, I'm, you know, I'm finding, you know, a little, I'm struggling a little bit to say definitively, these are, you know, these are for sure the high-need streets. If that's what you're asking us to sign on the dotted line, A, I want to know, what does that mean in terms of the whole, you know, the whole city network? And are we then committing to deprioritizing other streets? And if so, then, you know, I want to back up and make sure that we know exactly what streets are called, what their start and end points are, that there's a key associated to every single number with a map that we're referring to, and just make sure that we're, you know, we're really, you know, giving this the full consideration that it deserves.
That's a great question. The high-need corridors are the corridors that rose to the top in terms of needs for safety improvements for all modes, roadways that have conflicting priorities in terms of modal projects that are recommended throughout our other plans, for example. Not being included on this map as a high-need corridor does not mean that the pedestrian master plan network does not still apply. The Bike Master Plan recommended network, including the prioritization of projects, still applies. Our green infrastructure plan still applies as well. Being identified in the complete streets plan means that it gives us the ability to look at some of these roadways that have more potential conflict earlier in the process, and gives us the opportunity to implement projects or to make prioritization recommendations earlier on for all modes, rather than doing a pedestrian improvement and then coming back and saying, oh, you know, we have to add a transit stop as well. How are we going to do this? So, it gives us that opportunity to do some, to do these projects more holistically. At the same time, the project team is working on a design manual, and that will include guidance for staff, for developers, et cetera, for design and construction of our roadways utilizing the same complete streets approach. So, if the roadway, for example, is not included in this map, but we're looking at doing a pavement rehabilitation project, that design manual will give us the information on how to implement pedestrian improvements, bicycle improvements, et cetera, in a way that's standardized throughout the city. So, not being included as a high-need corridor, for example, does not deprioritize what's in existing plans, and it does not mean that a roadway will not receive the same treatment.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. And then, do you mind returning to the slide where you had, you had hot-mapped where you're getting, I think it was where you're getting feedback from or on? Okay. So, what really stood out to me is the, is the absence of our community feedback east of 101. And so, you know, from a community engagement standpoint, you know, this map does not pass muster for me in terms of reaching all communities.
This gives information about where we are hearing concerns, locations we're hearing concerns about, not where we were receiving comments, not where people live, for example. So, we do have some clustering around Monte Diablo, some around the Norfolk and Third Area, J-Hart Clinton, et cetera. But something that we noticed, for example, in our pedestrian master plan was a gap in terms of pedestrian network recommendations east of 101. So, that's something that we're looking to rectify in this effort. But certainly, take note of your comment, and we have two more phases of engagement coming up, so we can certainly make an effort to be in more areas geographically.
Yes. I mean, I think, I guess I would like to specifically ask, is, you know, given, given what we know about what's surfacing and where there are issues surfacing, can we specifically ask that, that the future phases focus on getting input from, from our communities in North Shoreview and Shoreview?
We're taking that comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Those are my questions. All right, let's open it. Did anyone have any additional questions? Okay. Actually, I have one more question. I, so, I just went to Toianaca and, and came back with so many, you know, so much inspiration and ideas, and, you know, and I think, you know, I guess, a lot of times when we're, when we're struggling in San Mateo, and, you know, it feels like we're, you know, we've tied ourselves into knots and we're landlocked, and, you know, how can we possibly fit all the pieces on the, on the board, right? And then, it takes an experience like going outside of the country to, to see how other, other folks are doing it. And, and one of the, one of the sort of jaw-dropping solutions that I saw in Toianaca was combining PED and bike lanes with just a simple line down the road, down the walkway. And everyone just walks on the left side, or bikes on the left side. And, and I guess, you know, I, while, I guess I want to ask the question, you know, are we taking an expansive view of best practices that go well beyond what is happening in even the United States? Because, you know, I've lived in New York, I've, you know, I grew up in Boston, I've lived in places where there was really functioning transit, and, and I've lived in Asia, and, you know, what, what other places, you know, in this country and, you know, around the world, our experience in living with, we're not even close to here. And, and some of these, the solutions are not 100% in our grasp, because they're not in our control, but, but the ideas that we can bring here and the best practices that are implementable, I want to make sure, I want to ask explicitly, are we looking to, you know, to back best practices, you know, through a global lens?
Can I do a follow-up to that?
Yeah, I think that that's a really great comment about the best practices internationally. The design manual is still under development, and I think that we're really using a broad brush on looking at what types of cross-sections and facilities could be possible here in San Mateo. So, I know what you're referring to with some of these kind of raised bikeways that are very closely adjacent to sidewalks, and it can sometimes work well in constrained areas. So, given the situation here in San Mateo, we will be doing some special treatments on kind of constraint options for constrained corridors, and we'll take that feedback under advisement as we develop that, for sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges, follow-up question?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up with what you said. I think, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up, actually, because I'm not as well-traveled as the mayor, but spending time in Canada... as the mayor, but spending time in Canada is amazing compared to here, and I would like to see that. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, one of the impediments to that is going away from the ordinance of 1797, which set up the, the townships all across the country with grid streets. And after World War II with suburbanization, we went away from that and created a maze for people to get through. And I'm guessing that that's really going to limit us to be able to do that. Do you agree with that? Well, for example, in Montreal or Toronto, you have, in the more urban congested areas, fairly wide streets for automobiles, but you have fairly wide bike lanes that are separated completely, and then wide sidewalks for pedestrians. And I actually saw all the bicycles stopped for all the red lights there, too. So they're well-trained. So my question is, is something like that reproducible here? I'm, and I'm in a doubting mood on that.
And I think that were we able to go back and rebuild San Mateo, we might build our roadways differently. But I think that there's a vested interest in keeping our roadways the way that they are.
Exactly, that's the point I was trying to bring up.
So to your point, we have varying widths on our roadways, and to Suzy's point, we'll be able to recommend different treatments for standard roadway sections and then options for more constrained, which we do have a number of here.
Well, there's economic reasons for these split-up streets. You get two more units per acre with cul-de-sacs.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I think we did, we did public, we did not do public, okay?
Go for it. It's good.
What time is it? So now is the time for a public comment on the item number 14. Deputy Clerk, would you please open up public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no request to speak on this item.
Really? Okay. Then we will close public comment. And who would like to start with providing some direction and feedback? And, and if you would please be brief, given the late hour, we would, I'm sure, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I touched on a couple things and just wanted to kind of reiterate them. One, also want to echo what the mayor said, which is, we definitely need to look more deeply east of 101. There, there are hotspots there, they just aren't being identified. And, and we've had the same thing as we've done our outreach for the general plan. We've had far less a response from the people there, so I don't know what it takes, but please get feedback, find the hotspots that are east of 101. And then, in parallel to that, connectivity from east to west, to me, is very important. Rich talked about 19th Avenue, and 19th Avenue is also a high-growth corridor for us. And also, I also look at where my daughters want to go if they're on a bike or walking, and teenagers want to go to the mall. So, you know, getting better access to Bridge Point is important. And also, like I said, it's, it's a high-development area with the fish market being redeveloped there. So want to make sure we focus on that. We have pretty good connectivity, or overpass connectivity at Third with the separated bike lane overpass. I would like to see if we could focus on a protected overpass for Hillsdale. I know that my peers on the council agree with me on that. And I've heard in doing outreach in the last few weeks with people in the village and on the other side, Los Prados, that there's definitely a want for the ability for their kids to be able to travel east to west, and that area is completely difficult unless you're, you know, on a bus or by, going by car. And if we're really trying to look forward, that, that's an area where we need to have a better pedestrian overpass and bicycle overpass, and preferably separated from traffic. I mentioned already connectivity to CSM. I, I do understand that that's not necessarily a city focus, but still, if we could take another pass at that, just to make sure, especially with the reduction in the amount of public services, you know, buses taking people up there, I just want to make sure we don't, we don't cut off our Harvard on the Hill. Beyond that, that was my comments. Thank you so much for a great presentation.
Who else? Councilmember Lorraine.
Okay, thank you. Feedback on high-needs corridors, does it align with community needs? From what I can tell, I feel like the high notes are there. I feel compelled to particularly highlight 31st between Alameda and going westward, as that was specifically pointed out by a number of folks in District 5 all year long. So this is great. And then, of course, you know, Alameda, Hillsdale, 28th, a number of corridors appear to be well-represented. I might leave it there. Feedback on draft policies. I, I think some of the commentary from SIC resonates with me, particularly the idea of potentially doing what we can to integrate near-miss data where feasible. I realize that's probably, you know, the tangential territory. I think that works, you know, of course, we have a policy that prioritizes safety for all modes, and so I think that's, that's well, you know, that we're, we're good there. I, I think the overall, you know, to me, at, at this moment, the, the policies resonate with me. I, the, the comments from SIC about prioritizing equity resonate with me, too. I, I feel like in that, in the, in that, you know, the conversation with the commission, it was kind of, you know, we talked about how that may fit within the current policies. I can, I can get a sense from other council members if, if they agree or if they have issue with that. I imagine that, like, under engage our communities, for example, and, and maybe even under rebalance priorities, equity could be implied. But I think if it were highlighted a bit more, or if there were an opportunity to find a way to, to strengthen it within the current policies, that, that would work for me, too. So I'm, I'm excited for the, the project and the plan. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you to the mayor. Number one, thank you to you and everybody behind you who did all this. In terms of, does it make sense, the corridors? I hear from community members both in District 1 and elsewhere that there's an increasing need for focus on the schools, because, you know, there are kids coming out and they're biking, they're walking, there are parents dropping them off and zooming through to get to work, and people have just become that much more intense, which is partially why we reduce the speed limits. But from a, you know, how do we deal with safety? I think there's still a lot of issues, one side from the student-school perspective and one side from the homes that are around, whether it's San Mateo High or Burrell Middle School. The homes are impacted in ways that they feel like they can't do anything about it. So I think that's very important. Obviously, in my part of the world, Alameda and El Camino are the two big high corridors. And Alameda just seems to be getting more and more and more, while I've heard people saying things are actually improving on El Camino because of some of the things that were done to traffic lights or whatever. So take it while you can get it, it's a win. I think also, it just, general, everyone's getting faster anywhere around the city. There's a particular issue around where both councilmember Lorraine and I deal with, of traffic getting on and off of 92, and people are not very, very helpful that way, and, you know, and it really, it hurts. Connectivity, particularly from the east-west and last mile. So if you don't really focus on that, make it safe, affordable, accessible, it doesn't happen. If you don't have the last mile, you don't have anything. But I'm preaching to the, the teachers on this. Traffic calming, we've all talked about it, more and more and more, please. And then, count train electrification and our lack of sufficient number of grade steps. How is that going to impact high, you know, high corridor, high-needs corridors or different, it's going to create a huge mess. So have you factored that all into what you're doing? And I really appreciate the mayor's comment about best practices through a global lens, because we have so much to learn. And that's it.
Councilmember Hedges?
I generally like the plan. I'll have a few cautions for you, but I myself have been a pedestrian and a, and a bike, bike rider for a lot of years until a few years ago, when I decided at my age it was probably safe not to ride my bike around San Mateo anymore. So one of the suggestions, and you probably picked it up from our other comments, is it's going to be difficult to remove parking. We've already done it once, it created a storm. So we really have to look at how we can serve everybody's needs. And thinking this was coming up, I took a ride down Delaware from 5th to 17th. There were five parking spaces in the middle of the afternoon. So wait till everybody comes home at night. So I've already raised the issue of being careful with the curb cuts, making sure that we're not putting people, especially disabled people, at risk with the wrong kind of curb cuts. And I really want to thank two of my city council people for bringing up the East Side. If you look at the data, only 6% of the people on commissions are from District 4, that's the East Side. There's reasons for that. Most of them have at least one job, and that's everybody in the house, not just one parent. Some have two, they have kids in school, and they're on a survival mode day-to-day. And they're a working-class community. So I can put you together with a number of people from the East Side if you want to have a focus group, because they have told me about it. Some of their complaints are the lack of safe routes to school on the East Side to the schools there. I've already brought it up with the traffic on 19th Avenue, which came so apparent to our city manager recently and his trip to the East Side. And those are all chalk points. I mean, it's so bad that a group of us, long before I got into council, drew some makeshift plans and sent them to the city about how to correct some of the stuff on 19th Avenue, especially with car traffic. And there are ways to do it. So I think that's it for right now, because I, I pretty well like the plan. Those are just the caution areas that I wanted to bring up. And I really appreciate people focusing on the East Side and trying to get comment out of there, because I can do it if you want to work with me.
Great. Well, I mean, at this point, I don't know if, I could say I like the plan, but I like the framework for the plan. And I like the process for the plan, really bonded to that. I'm, I think, you know, this is the first time I've ever heard of us actually doing an analysis by having, you know, having a consulting group and city staff ride bikes and walk together with community. So, you know, I, this is as, as hands-on, you know, getting close to lived experience as I get. This is what we've been asking for, this is what we, we've been asking, you know, the city to, to, this kind, this level of outreach, I think, is really setting, setting a new mark in, in, in our, in our own standards of how we do community outreach and engagement. And so I, you know, I really commend the process that you've undertaken, and the fact that it's been so data-based as well is, you know, is really, is, is just, it's really hitting all the high notes for me, especially that it's, you know, the comprehensiveness and holistic view that you're taking. I, I think, I feel like, that, I'll just reiterate some of the things that stood out for me in the conversation, you know, you know, mentioned by other council members that I, you know, I agree with, but I feel like they're also kind of already in there. And so I agree with our deputy mayor about wanting to, you know, make sure that schools and school locations that generate traffic in our destinations get a really close look, you know, that's in terms of the safety components and walkability, bikeability, and the, you know, the kind of sometimes not-so-great driving that happens around there. And, and I concur with, you know, wanting to make sure we're really supporting the east-west connectivity. I, you know, I hear, you know, I hear you all really integrating the, the point about, about prioritizing better outreach east of 101, and, and then also bringing best practices globally here, where, where it's relevant, especially in, in our more constrained areas. And so I, you know, I feel really listened to, I think, you know, I think we're really well on our way, and I'm excited about the development of this plan, and very excited to sink teeth into the north-central plan. So I hope to hear more about that as well. Do you have what you need from us?
I think we do, unless there were any specific feedback on policies.
Okay. Are we, are we covered fully? Yes, nodding heads, okay.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we made it. Now we're on to new business. City manager, city attorney, department head, deputy director, compensation plan amendment, item number 15. And I believe we all have a presentation from our city manager, Alex Kotikian.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The item before you this evening is a resolution to amend compensation plan to include salary increases for the assistant city manager effective October 29th. The city council determines the salary and benefit compensation for employees, but the department heads are not represented by a bargaining group, and therefore, the city council determines the range for department heads. They are at-will positions, and they serve at the pleasure of the city manager. The current vacancy status for the assistant city manager position, as I've come on board, one of the areas that I was really looking at for our organization is the effectiveness of the position itself and how it can serve the communities and the council's goals and priorities. And so in doing that, really a lot of listening with, with city staff and also thinking about the overall priorities of this council. The areas that I'm looking at elevating the position, from being kind of peer-to-peer with the rest of the department head team, is actually having department heads reporting into the assistant city manager position. What I'm looking at, at this time, is having the assistant city manager position, one, oversee the city manager's office, which includes our communications and community engagement division, additionally, our sustainability division, as well as our economic development division. Then you have integrated information technology that will also be reporting to the director of IT, will be reporting to the assistant city manager, as well as the department directors and the overseen departments of public works and also community development. So really elevating the status of this position, also the responsibilities are huge, and they would be serving as acting city manager in my absence as a city manager, as well as being a team player, you know, an executive management team player, supporting the entire organization itself and special projects. And so with that, we were looking at comparable analysis of city management with comparable cities and also just with the level of responsibilities. And in order to elevate that position, you're looking at about a 13% increase of the current salary. It's about a $37,600 increase in, during the fiscal year moving forward. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And should the council approve and move forward, I'd be opening up the recruitment tomorrow. And then, you know, we'll, we'll have it open for a few weeks to attract great talent to our organization. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you to the mayor. I assume that your recommendation is also based at looking across the peninsula and the county at, at other similar positions.
That is absolutely correct. That is absolutely correct.
And so where, where does this land in, in that range?
I believe it's the median range with the rest of the assistant city managers. And I'll double check and verify with our human resources director, Teresa. Is that accurate? You want to come up?
Teresa Abrahamson, HR Director here. It puts us at the median of other assistant city managers in our comp survey, but then it elevates it above that because they're going to be reporting, they're going to have department heads reporting to it. So the city man, the assistant city manager's salary was below market just in general. So some of that increase, I think it was about 7%, would get them to just the market median. And then because they're going to have department heads reporting to them, we needed to prevent a compaction issue and bring it up higher to have some space between the department head and the assistant city manager. So that's where we get to the 13%. Sorry, that's a long answer to your short question, Alex.
No, that's great. And so it's a 7% basically to get to the median, and then it's another 6% in order to take care of the compaction of having other department heads reporting to that position.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Okay. I think for the, just for the sake of public knowledge and understanding, you know, it would be helpful to explain, you know, why, why this change now?
So, so the reason for this change right now is in looking at just the overall number of reports to the city manager in this city, it can be, it's, it's a lot if you look at the span and control. So you have not only 11 direct reports, but then the weekly meetings with the city council members, and that's another five. And then you also have to deal with community members. And so in order for me to free my, free, free myself up to be able to effectively lead the organization and serve this council and also serve this community, I believe having that level of support of having, you know, having a little less of direct reports, a couple, a couple less, will support me to free up. But I'll still be providing guidance with assistant city manager on the initiatives and the areas of oversight at the same time. But what it does is it'll just allow me to manage effectively for this organization and for this community and for this council.
Great. Any other questions from council? No? Okay. Okay. So we'll open it up for public comment.
Madam Mayor, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, we'll close public comment. And who would like to begin providing comment? Councilmember Hedges?
I think in our weekly meetings, the city manager's explained why he wants to do this. We hired what we thought was the best candidate out there, and he's trying to reshape this organization to make it more efficient for him. And I think we need to let him do it.
Is that a motion? Is there a second?
I can second that.
Through the mayor, we have a slight, a small script that needs to be read before we consult takes action on this item.
And will I read it or will you read it?
I believe the mayor should, should read that script.
Oh, yes. Okay. Where did I go?
While you're looking for that, I guess one thing I would also say as to why this should be done is that it's a tremendous career development opportunity for people, you know, that it's just one more opportunity for people to grow within the organization.
Good point. Yes. The mayor needs to make this oral statement. Okay, ready. Okay. As required by California Government Code, Section 5495(c)(3), the following is a summary of the recommended final action on changes to the salary for the assistant city manager effective October 29th, 2023. The salary range for the assistant city manager classification shall be increased by 13%.
I have a motion and a second, so I'll take roll call vote. Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Wonderful. Thank you. I found my copy. So now I have two. Okay. Let's see. So we have reached the end of our regular meeting, and, and this is the, the time for reports and announcements, though we are not at the end of tonight because we still have another agenda item from our study session. But this is the time for reports and announcements. Who would like to start?
I attended the Silicon, I will. Thank you.
Yes, by all means, please.
I attended the Silicon Valley Leadership Poll in Santa Clara County last week, and two things jumped out to me. They did a poll of the area, and 72% said that costs are too high for housing, big surprise, and we're going in the wrong direction. Also, not a big surprise. But the trouble, the, the one number that really bothered me is that 56% said in the next few years, they're planning on leaving the area. And I don't need a crystal ball to tell me these are the people that bend the wrenches, draw the blood at the hospitals, and also our doctors who are leaving. They're retiring, and we're not replacing them. So we need to get this under control in some way. I don't have the plan to do it. Hopefully somebody does.
Other reports and announcements? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, through the mayor. This is a follow-up to one of the public comments made earlier tonight. I'm feeling compelled to speak about the recent horrific unspeakable attacks on innocent Israelis by Hamas and the subsequent growing humanitarian crisis affecting thousands of innocent Palestinians in Gaza. These are two human tragedies happening right before our eyes. What Hamas terrorists did to over 1,000 Israelis was evil in its purest form, I'm sure we all have seen, and it must be condemned in the strongest possible way. There is absolutely no justification for what Hamas terrorists did to unarmed Israelis, children, families, elders. We must stand with the Israeli people on this and continue to support their right to defend themselves. But we also know there are hundreds of thousands of innocent Palestinians in Gaza who are being caught in the crossfire of the reprisal, having their lives torn apart and even dying. We must support international efforts to find a way out of this humanitarian crisis and provide basic safety and sustenance to the Palestinians in Gaza. Back here in San Mateo, we can't change the actions of governments and militaries in the Middle East, but I believe we can fight back against all types of prejudice everywhere in how we behave toward each other and by speaking out against hate whenever we see it. We cannot allow anti-Semitism or Islamophobia to gain one iota of oxygen anywhere in our community. We must stand as allies of all vulnerable people and groups. I look forward to continuing to educate myself on what I can do in big and small ways to help demonstrate that human beings can be better. I was elected to ensure the safety and well-being of everyone in San Mateo. I am committed to doing this and partnering with others who are doing the same in their communities. We have a long way to go, but I must hope that we can be better. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I just want to thank the deputy mayor for her words, and I, I feel I support them and would like to echo them, and I appreciate her sharing them. That's, that's all.
Not everybody knows this, but my family are Palestinian Americans. My wife is from Palestine. And I appreciate what the deputy mayor said because, you know, my own daughters have seen some backlash of anti-Arabness. So I do, you know, I do completely condemn the actions of Hamas, but I also think it's important that we don't get caught up in the rhetoric of, of taking this out on anyone who happens to be Arab. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you, deputy mayor, for your sentiment. On a happier note, we have booze on B Street Saturday, the 28th. And prior to that, we have our mural unveiling. So I know we have no one in the audience to tell this to, but I just want to make sure we keep on pushing participation because this are going to be really fun events and great for our merchants and restaurants downtown. I also got a county notice, and I think most of you guys did as well, and I'm hoping that we can have the city get some verbiage out there. But there has been a West Nile uptick, especially in birds. And so I'd like to see if we could get some messaging out on our website, particularly, you know, about how to reach out to Vector Control and how to report dead birds and reminding our neighbors to make sure they keep their, their homes free of stillwater. So those were the two things I just wanted to touch on. And again, thank you, deputy mayor, for your sentiment.
Councilmember Hedges?
I want to follow up on the West Nile. Vector Control tells you that, that crows have no immunity to the disease, and they die almost immediately. So crows, within the first couple or three hours, they can test the fluid in their eyes to see if they have West Nile. I've been this, through this with them and got some birds to, to give them that died around us. So I do support having something on our website and maybe even having a report on it at one of our meetings from Vector Control because they're very active in the community. They'll do any kind of community meetings.
So, thank you, and I, I appreciate hearing words from fellow council members about support and solidarity for the, the many civilians that are suffering in Palestine and in Israel. And, and I, you know, I feel it's important to keep on saying in the public that what happened was the largest massacre of Jews since the Holocaust. And as we denounce the, the genocide of our Armenian friends, of the Jews, the 6 million Jews that we lost in the Holocaust, we must speak out and, and be vocal in the, the abhorrent and unacceptable actions of terrorism and this, and the terrorist group of Hamas. And, and in the same, in the same breath, we have individually and collectively also spoken out against anti-Muslim backlash and, and stated our, you know, our, our values and reaffirmed ourselves as a welcoming and diverse city that, that wants everyone to feel a sense of belonging and safety in this community. So this week, I, I lost a Holocaust survivor who's part of my extended family. And there are not that many left on this planet. And I wanted to read a poem in her honor. This poem was co-authored by two mothers, Palestinian and an Israeli mom who wrote this together. It's called "A Candle for Peace." "Let us light candles for peace, two mothers, one plea. Now, more than ever during these days of so much crying, on the day that is sacred to both our religions, Friday, Sabbath Eve, let us light a candle in every home for peace, a candle to illuminate our future, face to face, a candle across borders beyond fear. From our family homes, houses of worship, let us light each other up. Let these candles be a lighthouse to our spirit until all survive, arrive at the sanctuary of peace." So I wanted to invite everyone to join in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. And because we are experts at compartmentalizing, we will continue to our study session. Let's see. Yes. Okay. So we continued the special meeting from earlier this late afternoon of yesterday. No, almost. No, today? We're still today? Okay. And we have 19 minutes. Let's go. Okay. So, so this is study session, item number three, hate speech and remote public comment during public meetings. And I believe our city manager, oh, no, our city attorney is going to present on this item.
Yes, thank you. And I'm happy to step in on this item since I'm familiar with the topic. And I won't go over what's in the staff report. I trust you've all read it. I mean, there's a basic question for the council, which is, does the council wish to continue remote public comment at this time, or do you wish to suspend it? And at one time, remote public comment was required during the pandemic when all council members were calling in remotely under a bill known as AP 361. Then at that time, remote public comment was required. That is no longer the case. We're all in person. So it's really optional. There are pros and cons to it. You know, there's certainly a convenience factor for members of the public. This has been sort of a more recent change to public participation. It's also created an opportunity for people to call in remotely and engage in hate speech. We instituted some protocols during the October 2nd meeting to address that. There are some limited circumstances where we would need to have remote public comment, and that's under a different bill, 2449, that requires, in situations where a council member is going to call in due to, it's called just cause or emergency circumstances. For example, if you have, if there's a medical situation where there's a caregiving responsibility as specified in the law, then in that case, they can call in remotely. And in that situation, we have to allow for remote public comment. That has not happened to date, but it is a theoretical situation that could occur. Aside from that, it's really up to the council to decide whether or not to continue to allow it. In San Mateo County cities, as indicated in the staff report, there's kind of a split. Some people, some cities have discontinued it, at least temporarily, and others have continued allowing it. So that's the question for the council. So we're seeking your feedback on that question.
Questions from council? You don't have to. Okay. Councilmember Hedges?
So the abhorrent comments that were made, I want to try to put it in perspective. So everybody's telling me it's only happened, it's not been repeated again in any of the jurisdictions. If you know that it has, please let me know. Secondly, the very night that happened, we have someone that's been active in the city. She was on the DEI committee for a while, who's a paraplegic. She won't be able to take part in the city if she can't speak remotely. Parents with, with children that come home from work, may have an issue they want to talk about, that can't get out. We've got one person that used to work for the city that now can't get out because she's taking care of her sister. And she's been very active in the past in community affairs. Older people that can't drive after dark. We're really starting to limit when we don't allow this. It was such a great thing that we started it. So I would be against it. There are some fixes. I think we could split public comment if that's legal. We could do the remote at the end of the meeting and...
Is there a question coming?
No, it's a speech.
Okay. Okay. Do you mind putting a pin in it?
I don't mind at all. Thank you.
Okay. Are we, does anyone not, do we not have questions? Because we can, we can, if we don't have questions, then we can open public Because we can, if we don't have questions, then we can open public comment. Oh, we do have questions. Okay.
Sorry, but do we have an answer? Have there been any other repeat offenders that we are aware of in the peninsula?
I'm not aware of repeat offenders, and we just went through tonight. Well, we have one more item here.
And I'm not aware of any cities that have been struck twice by these individuals or similar individuals who engage in hate speech.
The only other question would be from a staff perspective. You know, Patrice and Martin did a great job of dealing with it. I just want to make sure that they're comfortable, if we're in that situation again, you know, putting up a strong front and if it's, that's my concern, is, you know, making sure that it's something they're comfortable with.
So it can be a very stressful situation, as we saw at the previous meeting, but our staff are prepared to be professional throughout the entire meeting itself, and as employer, we will provide them the proper resources that are necessary, if needed, to make sure that we're taking care of our employees at the same time.
I just, I just wanted to get a sense that, do the staff foresee a possibility of an impending Zoom update or any other strategic breakthrough in the next, in the recent, in the near future that might facilitate a pause to, as opposed to directly removing public comment or sticking with it?
So I know after our last meeting, we had some vendors reach out, just about some possibilities. I know that it would, you know, we haven't experienced it again this evening, so I thought, you know, under the circumstances that we were in, earlier this month, we did as best of a job as possible. Hopefully, we don't experience that again, but it's something that we will still keep looking at, possible avenues of being able to help us, whether it's a delay itself or we got to look at the legal ramifications of any type of registry or anything like that. But, you know, I know that there are certain technology firms looking into this now after our experience with this.
And I'll just add briefly before we take public comment that, you know, this involves an intersection between technology and the law, right? I mean, there's First Amendment implications, as indicated in the staff report, but under the circumstances on October 2, clerk staff, IT staff had instituted some controls to eliminate things like preventing individuals from speaking twice by changing their name, preventing individuals from being able to display images or videos. So there are some things that were already done, kind of behind the scenes, but, you know, I think we're, we also need to be careful about how we apply sort of new technological controls so as to not interfere with First Amendment rights as well.
Thank you. No further questions.
I'm having just sort of a question percolate in terms of, you know, there's been an uptick in anti-Semitism and anti-Asian hate, you know, those of us that interferes with the public and do so, you know, putting ourselves oftentimes in harm's way. And, you know, as a city that cares a lot about the, you know, acknowledging the very real mental health stressors that are part of this job as public servants, you know, including all of us in the organization, I wonder if this is, could be a potential area of focus that, you know, we could look at internally with the DEI task force and the external, the internal DEI working group and the external DEI task force in terms of bolstering our own resources to, you know, to support all of us that are dealing with, you know, hatred as it shows up in many forms.
Absolutely, and I'm still getting up to speed on our benefits program, but I believe we do provide, yeah, EAP assistance program, basically where we'll provide counseling for our staff free of charge. I believe there's like four sessions that you can have. That would include all of you, too.
Great. Thank you. And there are other probably, you know, affinity groups, support, you know, the conversations, brown bags, brown bags, and, you know, other type things that, you know, I think would be worthwhile exploring that are not the topic of this conversation. However, we, did we open it up? We did not? Okay.
See if anybody's awake.
Getting really tired. Still chat lagged.
Madam Mayor, we do have one request to speak on this item. Seema Patel, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening again, city council. Again, I serve on the planning commission, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. Earlier, councilmember Newsom said, "I know I'm speaking to an empty audience when you talked about beers on B Street," but you're not. I'm here, I'm listening, I'm commenting. And I wanted to say that it wasn't really until the pandemic when remote commenting became available that I really started engaging in council meetings and commission meetings. And it's, I think it's so helpful for people who lead busy lives and have other commitments to be able to participate. I know it's increased public participation a lot. Tonight, I was able to cook my family dinner, eat dinner with my family, get my kids to bed, help clean up my son, he's sick after he puked in bed, multitask and do some work for a 7:00 AM presentation I have tomorrow, all while listening to the council meetings. And I think it's just such an incredible tool for enabling public participation in busy lives. I would really encourage you to keep the remote commenting. I know it takes an incredible toll on our staff, and I'm very thankful for their professionalism and everything that they're doing to enable commenters to comment remotely. And I would say if they're willing, then it's just a huge amenity and opportunity for our community, so I would encourage you to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. I'll start for once. I, you know, as a Jew of color, I regularly am the recipient of all kinds of hatred and discrimination, racism, and what have you. And, and so, you know, while I was not at the meeting, this last meeting, I am no stranger to, you know, to abuse and, and, you know, live, you know, my lived experience bears that out. So even if, my position is that even if they were coming every week, I still do not believe that would be any justification to shut down remote public participation. I believe very strongly that we have an obligation to open the doors to civic engagement, and this has been one of the equalizing forces, increasing accessibility, you know, in immeasurable amounts. We still, I don't think, can fully quantify how, just how impactful the remote participation has been and will continue to be. And so I, for one, have absolutely zero appetite for curbing public participation virtually in any way, shape, or form. And so that's my position. Interested to hear from other council members.
Thank you, through the mayor. I agree with you 1,547.5%. I think everything you said is 100% spot on. And just a few minutes ago, I was talking about how in this terrible time of anti-Semitism and Islamophobia, we each have to do our own part and take big steps and small steps. And I think even if, as the mayor said, even if we get trashed every week, if we keep the Zoom lines open, we are saying, "Out of here. This is not important to us. This is not one of our values, and we are standing strong." So, and Ms. Patel had a whole lot of other reasons, and for everybody's reasons, I agree with it all.
So I was giving my passionate address on why we need to do this. I'm glad to hear other city council people feel the same way. As someone who was on the Elder and Disabled Committee or council at MTC for a number of years, you'll see many of my emails will be in 14-point because that's for people that have sight problems. I try to do those things that make it easier for disabled people, and one of them is this venue. And to cancel it would be canceling their ability to participate. I do have a couple of recommendations. I see that one of them was to have public comment, on general public comment at the end of the meeting. We did that with CCG at the last meeting. Of course, there wasn't a recurrence there, and the CCG committee meeting was horrible because that was visual, and it was nasty. So I would suggest maybe if we want to do that, we could, and I, the attorney can tell us whether it's legal or not, do the online comment at the end, on general comment at the end of the meeting and the in-present comment at the front of the meeting. If not, then we can move them both to the back of the meeting for a while to see what happens. The other thing is, one of the things that's been brought up, the old talk shows used to have a seven-second delay, and I'm sure there's technology that can allow us to do that here so that the city clerk can, if they hear the first part of it in any way, can cut it off and then read our little script as to why we're cutting it off. So I think there's ways we're going to be able to deal with it, and to take a knee-jerk reaction, like I've talked to, let me, let me calm this down, this comment down a little bit, to take the reaction that I've heard some of my colleagues in other cities where they just want to end it, I think that's just bad policy. And I think we can find ways to get around it and not eliminate a large swath of our population from being able, on items that are important to them, telling us how they feel. Because I like people telling me how they feel, even if they're hollering at me. Doesn't bother me.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Thank you. I really appreciate the mayor's comments on this, and of course, those of my other colleagues. I am 100% in support. You know, while I'm disturbed, first, I want to thank staff for, you know, continuing to work on this, the next steps we've already taken and considering more along the way, I was disturbed by what transpired and by what's been transpiring across the county, but I believe keeping remote commentary open is valuable, as has been described. We could, of course, have hate speech come via other channels as well. It's a constant possibility in our public process. I think my main hitch was, I feel as a privileged person who is not necessarily subjected to abuse all the time, I was concerned that I may be, you know, underplaying the sort of amount of burden it might be having on others. And so I think to hear from those who may feel a heavier burden, be in support of continuing to keep channels open is heartening. And we also, I received a note from the JCRCP area that seemed to be somewhat in step with that. And so, yeah, so I appreciate that. I also just feel like I appreciate the Daily Journal weighing in, and I feel like I generally agree.
I'm in support of keeping public comment opened and appreciate everything everyone has said, and I really don't have anything else to add except that, do we need a motion or is this just feedback?
No, this is just feedback. I think we have what we need. So it's really just stay the course for the time being.
Yeah, I would just say, keep us updated on anything that you think we can do on a technology basis to protect.
Sure.
Okay, folks, we did it. Two minutes to spare.
Oh, right. It's a good trial.
Oh, we're--
We'll call it the same day.
Okay, same day, same day. Stop.